Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us on this somewhat smoky evening. We appreciate you being here. I'm going to call the June 14 Fairbanks North Starborough Regular Assembly Meeting to order. It's approximately 6:00 PM in the Mona Lisa Drexler Assembly Chambers. We're going to start the meeting with a non-sectarian invocation, followed by a Pledge of Allegiance, and then we will move from there. So if you'd all please join me for the invocation, and I'll give you advance notice, the flag is back there. But we're starting with an invocation, so please bow your heads with me. Thank you for this crazy June weather, for the flowering trees, the budding flowers, the blooming flowers, the freezing flowers, for friends, colleagues, and our community. Please guide us as we consider the decisions before us. Help us to listen graciously to opinions we do and don't agree with. Give us grace in our discussion and questions, remembering we are all here doing our best and with the best intentions to help our community to be its best. Amen. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So with that, we'll ask the clerk to please call the roll. Thank you. I'd like to note for the record that Mr. Cooper will be running late tonight. We expect him about 7:00. Mr. Lajeski?
Here.
Mr. Quist?
Here.
Mr. Tackey?
Here.
Ms. Major?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Ms. Dodge?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you very much. So we're going to start now with a safety announcement, and I'm just going to remind us all of our emergency exits should we need them. We can go back out through the double doors many of us came in through. We can also go through that door right behind the young man with the camera, and we can also go out through a door right behind his post. This one out to the left, that one out to the right. We don't expect it, but we're ready. Thank you. So does anyone need to, does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? I don't see anyone indicating so. Does anyone need to declare a possible conflict of interest for items on the consent agenda? I don't see anyone indicating that they do. So that rapidly takes us to Citizens Comments. And we have two kinds of Citizens Comments. We have Citizens Comments A, which are for items on the agenda but not available for public comment, and we have Citizens Comments B, which for items that are not on the agenda, anything in the world but that which is on the agenda. So I'm going to start with Citizens Comments A. I have seven people signed up. We have until 6:50 this evening to go through these before we, as an assembly, have to recess to prepare for the public meeting, for the, that's what they call it. This is clearly a public meeting, but this is the pre-public meeting. And if we don't get through everybody, if there are still people that wish to speak on items that are on the agenda but not available for public comment, we will have another bite at that apple after we have that meeting with the ordinances, et cetera, that we're dealing with this evening. So with that, I'll quit wasting that precious time, and we'll start with two people. So what we're going to do is I'm going to call the names as they are signed up, and I'm going to call, I'm going to have both seats filled at each all the time so that we can maximize our opportunity to speak. Each of you will have three minutes. I'll ask you for your name, your neighborhood, and then we'll start your three minutes, ask you to spell your last name, or I guess your full name. And we are always, the Assembly's role in this is to listen and to ask questions, to clarify what it is, their understanding of what it is that you have testified. So first I have Joanne Sexton, and then I have John Cook. If Joanne and John would please come forward and give us your name, your neighborhood, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Joanne Sexton, and I'm from Slatorville.
Thank you, Joanne, and could you please spell your name for us? Thank you so much. You have three minutes. Please proceed.
You are well aware that I'm a friend and supporter of Mary-Sai, remaining open and operational till plan is in place to replace or repair the center. I'm here to address the user-free fee increase. In past testimony, all supporters agreed that in order to remain open and operational, additional fees would have to be in place to finance any cost to borough. Although the group agreed, we are amazed that the fee for a punch pass went from $18 for 10 passes to $36, and the monthly pass from $40 to $88. I guess our assumption was it would be done in increments, as there are no user fees for Alaska Land, Big Dipper, or any of the parks, which the borough maintains, though it's seasonal costs for the parks. Now we've added yet another park, funded for now, but will be maintained by the borough hereafter. I would suggest maybe a non-resident fee for any user fees for your properties, as we have a lot of people using your facilities during our tour season, and the other users live here. It is worth your time to at least discuss. I appreciate your efforts, and thank you for all your respectful comments during these meetings, hearings, and await the test results, which, as you have stated, will not be available till August. My question is, why is it as so long as the tests have been done for three weeks? Through all these meetings, it's been very informative how this process works and how you respond to emails, phone calls, and attendance, as every issue is discussed, again, how the comments from each member is addressed to the Assembly and those in attendance. Thank you for your time and attention, and I remind you that Mary-Sai is a seasonal center. And the last meeting without public comment, which we attended, we were discussing piano fees at the Noel Ween Library, and so I felt it was important to address user fees at this meeting, as the increase has been put in place.
That concludes your remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please let the record show, note that Mr. Cooper has joined us. Thank you. So any questions of Ms. Sexton? Mr. Quist?
Thank you for your testimony. So how do you propose that the Borough fund what is like a high maintenance service without raising user fees or using, raising them as much?
That was not part of my comment. I was addressing user fees in general, that if the borough, if we're unable to maintain maintenance for any of our buildings, you, in your capacity, may consider using user fees for the other facilities that you maintain, such as the parks, the Dipper, and Alaska Land. And the user fees have gone in place for the pools, Hammy, Mary-Sai, and Westcott. And I'm just wondering, do you, in your mind, think that that was kind of a big hike from 36, you know, $18 to 36, or 40 to 88? When we looked at the proposal as we went through all these meetings with you, I thought that the monthly pass was going to be $60. And so I'm just trying to get answers from this Assembly, which all of you are here to serve us, to answer why it went from $60 to $88.
So maybe you can, this isn't exactly that kind of forum.
Right, right. So our forum, remember, I was saying that what we can do is ask clarifying questions of your comments.
Just addressing user fees. I'm just addressing a concern that perhaps you can consider that for other facilities. And I thank you for your time and all your positive comments that we've all incurred as we set through these meetings, both public comment and non-public comment. So thank you.
Thank you. And so what we can do is ask clarification of technical questions, such as whether there might be user fees at the Big Dipper and some other facilities. Mayor, would you like to respond to that technical question?
Well, there are user fees at quite a few of our facilities. There are a number that we don't. We try to analyze every facility, and like with a park, you have to look at the cost of collecting the fee and how you would do that, and in many cases, the collection of the fee costs more than what you're collecting. So you're losing money by trying to collect fees at some facilities. So we obviously don't try to do that. We don't even try to do it if you're just paying for the collection of the fee, because you're not getting anywhere and you're just charging the public for no reason. You're not contributing to the balance. And so that's an evaluation we do on every facility that we have to try to recoup a reasonable portion of the use. Virtually every facility we have requires a subsidy, so part, so it costs us $100 to provide a service. We might charge 20 for that, and the taxpayers are kicking in the other 80% of the cost through property taxes. And it's always a debate, what's an appropriate percentage to try to recoup for the cost of a facility? And I don't have a concrete answer for that, and it does vary from one facility to another. A number of our facilities, like at the Big Dipper, we recoup, it costs, I don't have the exact figures, I'm sorry, but in the neighborhood of $150 an hour to provide a sheet of ice, and we charge anywhere from 115 to 180, depending on the user group and the time of day. So essentially, we're recouping close to 100% of the cost of providing that sheet of ice. And at the pools, it's much different. We aren't even close to that in a lot of cases.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Have you considered non-resident fees?
So we're at a place now where we'll see if there are other questions for you? Did you have your hand up, Mr. Lawrence?
Ms. Sexton, are you, and I don't have this information, are you aware as to how much other municipalities in this state charge for the use of swimming pools?
What are you referring to, sir?
Pools in Matsui, Anchorage, Juno. Do you know, can I, do you know what the residents in those municipalities are being charged?
No, do you?
We heard them. I can't quote them to you, but I would urge you to find out.
Thank you. No, I did not check into that. That would be a thing, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sexton. We appreciate you coming down and for your patience. It's a, it's sometimes a bit of an awkward interaction, but it keeps it structured for everybody. Ms. Rosser, Rossar, you're next, if you'd join us. Mr. Cook, please give us your name, your neighborhood, spell your name for us, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes. My name is, excuse the frog in my throat. My name is John Cook. I live in Farmers Loop, and I'm here just to address the pool user fees.
Thank you. Can you spell your name for us, please?
C-O-K.
And, thank you.
And I'm currently the president of the Midnight Sun Swim Team, and what I'm going to start with is I have a little boat in Valdez. It sits in the Valdez Harbor in a slip. About four or five years ago, the city of Valdez approached me and everybody else down there and said, "We cannot afford to rent you this slip anymore for what we've been doing. We have to, we're way behind everybody, every other harbor in the state, and we have to increase your fees." What they didn't do was say, "We're going to quadruple it in two months." We, we were able to, they were able to come up with a plan over the next three to four years where we increased our fees incrementally and made it palatable to everybody, so where everybody didn't just have to load up their boats and go. This is a situation here in Fairbanks that, that is rather staggering to us. We understand you need to increase the revenue, and we get that. We want to do our part as a swim team. There's nothing more important than keeping these pools viable, and as long as we can, we realize they're aging. But, so, we want to do whatever we can to help here. And we, another issue that we have, we've been under contract with you, with the borough, for decades, and we consider ourselves partners. We take many young, as many young swimmers that we can from your swim program, where they come out of it as young, beginning swimmers, and we turn, we put them in a competitive atmosphere and turn them into world-class, college-level swimmers. We do this every year. Many of them go on to compete at college and beyond. They're not in the streets, out in the streets, getting into trouble. They're focused on swimming throughout their high school years, and they love it. We, all we're asking is instead of slamming us hard like you did, to work with us and to provide an incremental process where we don't have to price our swimmers and their families out of the pool. We, if, which might happen if we, if we were forced to make rapid drastic dues increases, which was very possible. A graduated system of increases over enough time will make the difference. And so, is that three minutes?
Yep.
Okay. So we just respectfully ask for graduated increases, which allow us to ramp up.
Let's see if there's some questions for you. Ms. Major has a question for you.
How much does the Midnight Sun Swim Team expect to have to raise, you know, prices, whether it's per swimmer or per family?
We're working on that now. It's, it's, it's going to be a 20, 30% increase.
If I may ask a follow-up, what is it that they're paying now?
Um, anywhere from 100 to, in the neighborhood of $100, $130 a month.
Excuse me, we have a technical question, a technical point here. I just want to let you know. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Please proceed, and then we'll have a discussion. Ms. Major, I'm sorry, did you?
Oh, he answered my last question.
Thank you. Mr. Quist?
Hi, thank you for your testimony. When the Midnight Sun Swim Team rents the pool, about how many swimmers are using it on average?
You mean for practices?
Yeah, yeah, not meets, just like, you know, you, when you just, you rent it mostly for practice and occasionally for meets.
Yes. It varies every day, because different groups are there, but it's anywhere from 20, 30, in that range, 40 kids at a time, but, but there's different levels that swim at different times. And so it's, and, and the seniors, the older kids are swimming in the mornings, there's 15, 20 of those at a time. It's really, it's hard to nail down for an exact time, an exact number, but.
20.
Yeah, 20 to 30, something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
And it depends on the year, the time of year. Wintertime, there's a lot more.
Mr. Lawrence?
Mr. Cook, as be, is it fair to say that, you know, the swimming teams use the pools as, for practice a lot more than they use it for meets?
Yes.
So it's the, so it's the amount of being charged for the practice time that would impact your, your budget the most? All right. Are you, are you familiar with the, with the fees charged that, in, by other pools and throughout the state?
I have seen information. Mr., is it, is it Mr. Stevens? You have a person that, in the, in the administration here that sent me a lot of information as to what you, what you looked at. And as a matter of fact, I heard a recording of your August 21 meeting where you all discussed this, and you did talk a lot about the different pools around the town. There's a lot of variations on all those pools. Some of them have, some of those swim teams have 300 members, or one of them does, and that has a big difference, makes a big difference on the way they, they can absorb a fee increase. And so if they have a higher, a higher price that they're paying, it's a little easier absorbed. It has a lot to do with, with how many swimmers are, but I did see what you're talking about, some of it, yes.
And my recollection of, of the information provided to us was that the fees in this, in this borough are significantly less than anywhere else.
And I don't dispute that. I'm just saying, this is a slam all at once, that we would like to absorb a little easier.
Okay, are you, well, I mean, I doubt if you're aware, but I have to ask you as if, are you aware that an ordinance is being proposed that would reduce the practice time fee from 40 an hour to 25 an hour?
I was not aware of that.
Would that, what kind of impact would that have?
Big difference.
All right. That should come up, I'm not sure when, but in the next few weeks, so keep an eye out.
Mr. Mayor, and then I really need to wrap this up.
As I was mentioning, one of the things we struggle with is what's a legitimate percentage to recoup from the user of a facility? If it costs us $100 an hour to provide something, and you're renting it for an hour, what's a reasonable percentage, do you think, for the user of that to, to pay?
I guess I don't understand. You, you're wondering how much of this we should cover and how much the taxpayer should cover?
Yeah. What percentage is covered by user fee legitimately for a facility?
It's that, to me, that would seem to be directly related to the benefit we get to the community. This, the, the number of kids that go through this program would, would really bear on my decision here. I couldn't, I, I mean, I'm just pulling off the top of my head, you know, 25, 30, 40%? I, I don't, it's a hard, I'd, I'd have to think about that one, but, but I do believe that if it's a really a good benefit to the, to the city, obviously, we couldn't be covering the whole cost. It's, it would, the taxpayer, I'm assuming, would want to help for the benefits they're getting.
It is a tough question. Thank you for your, your estimate.
Thank you. So I, because of the fact that I was aware there was a pool user fee ordinance, I erred. It is not on the agenda yet, so we don't, this is not the right time for us to be talking about user fees. It is the right time for us to be talking about the bond or the ordinances that are being proposed for, so, anything that's being introduced. User fees specifically are not on the agenda, are being proposed on this agenda. So what I need to do is, thank you, Mr. Cook, for your, for your discussion, and for your testimony. Ms. Rossar, I have you down for park, and I didn't know what that meant.
Uh, it was in regards to a Parks and Rec meeting I attended.
So that was.
And there's a park that's going to, is.
Be on the bond? So are you speaking?
Oh, I did not realize that was on the bond.
So I think you might also fall under the items not on the agenda, but, and that's going to be next?
Okay.
Okay.
I was not aware.
Yes, my, my error. So if someone wants to speak on the items that are being advanced, such as the ordinance providing for the disposition of property within the city of Fairbanks, ordinance for real property acquired that, through tax foreclosure, the geo-bond, the tax revenue cap revision for improvements to Mary-Sai, or the tax revenue cap to facilities, maintenance reserve, or the amending the brewery, brew pub, microbrewery. So there's, there's actually quite a list. There's also agriculture and livestock, timely mailing of taxes due. So this whole, on our agenda, if we look at all the ordinances coming in, or any resolutions, this is the time to speak on that. So if, does anyone wish to speak on those items? So I don't see anybody coming forward, so we're going to close public items A. It was my, it, public item A. And it was my error again. It's my night for errors. I should have said, "Thank you for the smoke and errors." You all are on the right one. I started with the wrong one, because I was just so excited, or I had it in my little, little head. So we're going to open up Citizens Comments A, which is for items that are on the agenda. We've already done that. No one's coming forward. We're closing it now. We're back. Ms. Rossar, please excuse me. Please come back and take a seat. I'm sorry. Do you, do you all want me to, here's what, here.
I'm afraid to speak.
Here's what happened. My apologies. I got so excited by this, and I, and I thought that this was, was the item A, that I picked the wrong sheet, so. And then our clerk realized I was on the wrong sheet or something. So anyway, make it, Ms. Rossar, please come forward, and Mr. Weed, please come forward. And we are grateful. Thank you for your graciousness while I confuse us all.
I'm here, Mickey, and you.
Yeah. So this is on items not on the agenda, and that's what you all thought you were signing up for, and I just.
I was confused when you said it was on the bond. I go, "Really?"
Yeah. So thank you for your graciousness. Ms. Rossar, please give us your name and your neighborhood, spell, spell your last name, and you'll have three minutes to talk on anything not on the agenda.
Thank you. My name is Mickey Rossar, R-O-S-S-E-R. I live in the downtown area on Denaliway. I'm here this evening because I'm sort of a little confused. When we were here on the Mary-Sai issue, two points came across clearly to me, that there was the deferred maintenance, and the borough was out of money, and we were going to all have to work together to sort of solve this problem. So after attending the borough meetings, I decided, well, maybe it was a good idea to attend a Parks and Recs meeting, since Mary-Sai falls under Parks and Rec. So I went to a Parks and Rec meeting, just, just to go and see, to take part and listen. So I went to the meeting, and there was a representative from the mayor's office that spoke, and she opened up, introducing herself, and I don't recall her name, and she said she was from the mayor's office, and then stated, "Well, we have found some extra funds, and I'm here to speak to you on the Shanley Project, which is a park behind Beaver Sports." And I guess my concern was that here, we kept hearing that there was no money, but now we have money to build a park. And I am not opposed to parks at all. I'm a grandmother. I have grandchildren. We use the borough parks extensively. I joined the flip thing so I could be part of all the extra things that the park was doing. So I'm not opposed to parks, but when we are having such a hard time finding funds to maintain a community pool, which is year-round, can be used year-round, versus then another park that is only used, I don't know, what do you want to say, four months out of a year? When we have a similar park to the one that's being proposed right down the road at Kramer's Field. And so when there's this dire, same need of money, I just have a hard time seeing why another park at this time is a smart move, with taxpayer money, when there's a community pool that's on, on the line. We know it's not over. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Let's see if there are questions. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
First off, I absolutely agree with you 100%. So I need to clarify and ask you a question. So are you aware we have absolutely no plans to build anything over there? The commission was to be tasked with coming up with, we have a large piece of property, and we have developers that want to buy some of that.
Yeah, I swear that.
And, and so we are asking the Parks and Rec Commission to identify how much should be park, and how much we could sell to generate some revenue. And so we don't want to sell something we want to use for a park, but we don't want to use the entire piece for a park, so they've been asked. So they've been asked to develop a plan for the property so we can know what we can sell over there. So there's no development plan whatsoever. We're just trying to identify what we can sell.
Well, they were talking about a half-mile boardwalk around it, and they gave it, they didn't give a figure. She gave a figure for a park in Canada at like two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars, but that was a two-mile boardwalk. I guess I'm just asking the Assembly to think hard about, you know, funding another, you know, possibly funding another park when there's a community pool at stake too.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Rosser? Mr. Williams, didn't you, I had an inquiry about this, and didn't you say that there was also some work at Tananaw Lakes that was discussed at this meeting, and it was money from the Isalask or Arctic Winter Games?
I don't know if it was discussed at the same meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But there was a, there was a Tananaw Lakes project going on for a park development, and that money is coming from Arctic Winter Games Fund, or some money left over from that fund, and it's got to be appropriated here pretty soon or we're going to lose it. So, and it's just the, kind of the planning phases and kind of set in the footprint of the park, and the whole park plan isn't going to get implemented. We just have to spend that money before it goes away.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Rosser? Seeing none, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down, and thank you for being gracious with my confusion. Our next, I have Lizzie Bennett. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Mr. Weed, thank you for your patience. If you'll give us your name, spell your last name and your neighborhood.
My name is Carl S. Weed, last name is W-E-E-D. I live over in the Aurora area. I'm talking about user fees tonight, too. My main concern is even the federal government doesn't jump up as much as the borough did in one fell swoop. Also, I wanted the borough, I didn't get a chance to look and total it, all the pages of the Finance Committee, to see if the Finance Committee did take into consideration of a tax of some type or another on head tax on Alaskanland, oh, excuse me, Pioneer Park, or Hezray ball fields, the soccer fields, the ski places up on Birch Hill. All of these are used, and the mayor has brought into attention that these fees, people are using these areas and not even contributing other than borough taxes possibly back to the community. So there is an area there that we could be recouping. We have summer hires that the borough hires every summer, and I realize that these are kids usually going on to college, some of them are high school or maybe even younger yet. I think it's a great program. I do not see why this would be a good learning program for them to charge like twenty-five cents a head for people going into Alaskanland, or twenty-five cents a head going into the soccer fields on Saturday. And I have a grandson that participates at the soccer fields. I know we pay, I know they pay to the soccer fields and to the Hezray complex. Also, Big Dipper, all these that have transient people, I won't, meaning transient, but people that utilize these fields in and out, that twenty, I'm just using twenty-five cents as a token amount, that even though this is just, I know it could raise enough capital to pay for the hourly wages and insurance and everyone else that comes out of the kids, the cost for the kids in the summertime that are under employment by the borough. But this is some area that nobody's ever looked at. We always look at these narrow-sighted areas where there's money people are already paying, and then we, but we don't look at any other item out on, out there that people are using. I look back at the time that all these big buses came into the borough, into Alaskanland and tore the concrete asphalt up out there, these heavy vehicles. There's also another road that these heavy vehicles utilize and have torn to pieces over in the area and the town, which I don't know whether it's a borough-maintained road or not. And there should be a user fee on these vehicles, these heavy vehicles that are using it. I won't earmark these bus, I mean, these vehicles what they are, but these are being brought into the Salmon Bake. I know the Salmon Bake, Rick Winther pays money to the borough. He's a hard worker. I've known him for years. And the Binkleys, I mean, I mean, the other road that I'm thinking about is being torn up by the riverboat, and that we ought to take them into consideration as fees for, revenue for the borough.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Let's see if there are any questions for you. Mr. Mayor has a question for you.
Are you aware, we have used a lot of different business models at our facilities, and like the soccer association, we didn't build that, the soccer association built it. We only have about a hundred thousand dollars in that facility over the last fifteen years. And they maintain it, they take care of it, they built it. All we did was provide the land for them. And so that's why we don't charge. They charge the users, and they use that money to maintain the facility. So that's one of our user agreements, and it's a different way that we don't use taxpayer dollars to provide services, and we have a number of those. So I, just trying to let you know, we do consider those things, and we, and we have different ways of collecting revenue.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Weed? Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate you coming down.
Okay, thank you very much for listening to me.
And let's see, I have Jenny Hoffel. She'll tell me how to sell, how to say it when she gets up. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Bennett, your name, and please give us your name, spell your last name, and give us your neighborhood.
Okay, my name is Lizzie Bennett, last name spelled B-E-N-N-E-T-T, and my neighborhood is the Aurora subdivision.
Thank you.
Today, I'm just here to talk about how swimming impacted my life. So I'm talking about the pool rental fees. So today, I'm also talking about not just how swimming impacted me, but the Midnight Sun swim team as a whole. And this team really became my family, figuratively and literally. It was through MSST that I actually met my high school sweetheart at the age of ten, and will be getting married here in Fairbanks next Saturday. I fell in love with the sport at the age of twelve. It instilled values such as hard work, perseverance, and life skills such as time management, which helped me excel in academic careers. My love for swimming became a passion, and I had this determination to pursue college athletics. I accredit this drive to the community of MSST, who pushed me, supported me, and challenged me to excel as an athlete. I swam for four years at the Division One level, but I was not the only one. University of New Mexico, University of Texas, University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, Seattle University, Wright State University, and my alma mater, Sacred Heart University. These are all the colleges that my friends and I attended because of the community, the training, and the guidance that we had through MSST. These were all Division One programs, and all six of us received athletic scholarships to swim for these institutions. MSST was never seen as just an extracurricular activity. It was our life, and we absolutely loved it. Our town offers a plethora of sports with several opportunities, but unfortunately, it's pretty limited with swimming. We already have three competitive swimming programs within the Fairbanks North Star Borough, and I'm afraid that this drastic pool rate increase may bring our competitive programs to just two. Today, I ask you to think of the successes of the program that I'm part to be a part of. And if you haven't been to Hammy lately, I urge you to please go there. If you look at the entrance doors, you will see the plaques that we've worn over the years, the banners of state championships that we've claimed hung around the pool, two of which I was a part of in 2006 and 2010. And our records board at the right side, both state and pool records my teammates and I have held over the years. As an alum of this program, I wanted to leave a legacy behind to my younger teammates, who are like me, born and raised in Fairbanks, trying to find a sport that they loved. I wanted to show them that swimming isn't just about achieving best times or breaking records or winning titles, but it's to work hard at the sport you love, to find friendship in those around you, and to dream big. I was able to do that. Please let these kids have the chance to also chase their dreams like I did with mine. I want to thank you for your time today, and I open to any questions regarding the training that the swimming program helped me succeed in my collegiate career. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's see if there's any questions for Ms. Bennett. Mr. Lawrence?
Ms. Bennett, I probably, maybe I've just misheard, but what team, what swim team here in Fairbanks did you, did you swim on?
Midnight Sun Swim Team at Hammy.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Bennett? Yes, thank you. Mr. Christ has a question for you.
Thank you for your testimony. If you had to put a dollar amount on what, like, an individual should pay in order to, like, be part of a team that's renting the whole facility, like, I mean, how much is it worth to you, I guess?
You mean the team as a whole or individual for the fees?
Well, individual, I mean, some of the teams made of individuals and they contribute fees, so like, if, what should you, let's say you're on a team and you're renting the pool for an hour, and what's, should your share of that be?
I'm trying to think back to, so just to give you some background, I swam until 2010. So I was an active swimmer from the year 2001 to 2010. In terms of the fees, I know they increased throughout my time there, but I would probably save, you know, the one-hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty, or, I can't remember the exact number that Mr. Cook said earlier about that, or maybe just a little bit more. And I want to just, you know, explain that in terms of swimming, it's a, it's a year-round sport, so it's not just, you know, by the hour. If you're training that competitively, you're four hours a day, sometimes even three hours on a Saturday, so it's really hard to kind of put a dollar amount because it kind of depends on the training and, you know, what level you're in. So if you're going to start at the beginners, you're only an hour. Whereas in the summer, I would train four hours a day from eight to ten, and then I'd have a break, and then I'd be back at four to six, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday. I apologize, that was kind of a tangent, but it's just, it's just kind of a loaded question to ask in terms of, you know, per hour.
Well, if I could follow up, I'm sorry to ask about dollars, but I mean, this is, you know, what we do. And then, I mean, if you're talking about fees, or I was curious about fees because I mean, it's the issue you're addressing, the fees are by the hour. I mean, that's the way the fee is structured, so I mean, that's the reason I asked the question, but I think that you gave me lots of information here. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I feel like I can't really answer that since I've been, you know, not an active swimmer for seven years and things have changed. But yeah, I would say about consistently per month, it was about a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty through my time at MSST.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Quick question. When you, you know, as you got better and you were practicing three to four hours a day, how many other swimmers on the Midnight Sun team were doing the same thing?
I feel like that's also loaded because it kind of also depends on the season. So here and there, we would have at least, you know, ten for sure that are doing what I was doing. It fluctuates based on if it's summer or winter or spring, because there's other sports going on. But summer definitely was the chance for us to go, probably would increase more to ten to fifteen because there's always that championship meet, so when it's around championship time, the numbers would increase.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
I hope I answered your question.
So philosophically, the question I asked before, what's a reasonable percentage of operating cost that the user of a facility should pay for as opposed to, so everything we do, we end up subsidizing to some degree. But the user that's using a facility, what percentage should they pay of the cost, the operating cost, not the cost of the building?
I guess in terms of that, that's another question. I can't give a percentage at this moment. In terms, I guess, in terms of MSST as a gen, as a whole, I didn't, I wasn't part of the, you know, numbers and prices in terms of that, so I don't know if I can answer that with a clear head, but I definitely think that where we're at now, if we just have maybe just a few percentage increase as the years go on, it may be helpful versus this drastic four-times increase. I don't know if that answered your question. I apologize.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your dedication to swimming, too.
Yes, thank you. Any last questions for Ms. Bennett? Seeing none, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down and speaking with us. And I have Avery Hoffel next, and Ms. Jenny Hoffel, how my, please state your name, spell your last name, give us your neighborhood, and then I'll know how to say it.
My name is Jenny Hafle, H-A-F-E-L-E, and I reside in Aurora subdivision. There's a lot of Aurora subdivision people here today.
Yeah.
I think I'm going to amend my comments, I think with Mr. Van Lawrence's enlightenment that there might be a proposed ordinance coming down the pipe, you know, we'll, I'll save some of my comments for then. I am a parent of Avery, of the Midnight Sun Swim Team, and I also sit on the board of the Midnight Sun Swim Team. So, and I'm here to talk about the pool fee increases in the FY19 budget. They kind of took us off guard a little bit, and I'm a little regretful for that. So, you know, we're committed to working harder with the Parks and Rec Department, keeping the dialogue open as new budgets are proposed in the coming years, and making sure that we're aware of big changes that we are talking about today. John had mentioned, we register between ninety and a hundred swimmers a year. It, again, fluctuates based on the season, and that it, pool fee increases to our program is fourfold, and it was a pretty staggering number to see come across our recent board meetings. So I second what Mr. Cook had requested with maybe a step-up process. We understand that we have a, it's a good thing going with the pools and a good thing going with the borough, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate that relationship, and we want to maintain that. But we definitely want to reach out to the Assembly to work towards reducing those fees and then making a gradual step up, because we just, as a small nonprofit, we don't have a fund balance to pull, to pull from, you know, to cover that, you know, tens and tens of thousands of dollar gap. So I'll just leave it at that. I appreciate the information, you know, knowing that there might be an ordinance. We love to, you know, continue the dialogue with the Assembly members, the sponsoring members, of course, who are working on it, and we'll be here to support that ordinance in the future.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hoffle, right? Thank you. Let's see if there are any questions. Yes, Ms. Major?
You had mentioned the potential tens of, or thousands of dollar increase. Have you calculated maybe based on historical, your historical use or the swim team's historical use of the pools, what the actual cost that you guys would have to absorb is?
We're working on it with our treasurer, looking at historical data based on the number of pools. Again, it does fluctuate based on the month, based on the season. You know, we don't use the entire pool all of the time. Sometimes we get all the lanes, sometimes we get some of the lanes. There's always lessons going on, so sometimes it kind of shifts how many hours and the pool usage that were afforded. But we're think, I think early estimates, when it first came across, our email was upwards of thirty thousand dollars. And naturally, like with any nonprofit, we're going to, you know, reevaluate our revenue streams, work on new fundraising tactics, but it's scary. You know, we live in a tough economic climate right now. Businesses and private individuals are asked every day to support youth programs and other nonprofits, and the community's a little fatigued, and so we're nervous about that fatigue with fundraising strategies. And so naturally, user fees and monthly dues for our swimmers and families is, is going to be on the block as well.
I have a question for you, Ms. Hoffle. We had an understanding, at least this was my understanding, based upon what we were told, that typically if you had this, had practice, that you had the whole pool, but it didn't sound like that based on what you were just speaking. Can you tell me more about that?
No, we, I think, again, it depends on the time of day.
Right, sure, sure.
You know, there's also a season for swim lessons, so we maybe, you know, we may have six lanes operating on one half of the pool. The other half of the pool might have a mom and taught class going on. There might be swim lessons going on in other corners. You know, then at a certain time, we might lose a lane or two lanes to lap swimmers, either in the morning or in the afternoon. We might lose a lane because the lifeguards need to do training, you know, so kind of, it's a very fluid relationship with the staff at the, at the borough and the aquatics facility. You know, it's something we, you know, don't take for granted. We appreciate it. They're flexible with us, we're flexible with them. So, you know, it's definitely not like a hard and fast, okay, you're renting the pool, you get everything. It's, you know, we're all working together.
So there are other users there that are benefiting from the lifeguards and et cetera?
Many times.
Potentially, depends upon the day.
Potentially, yeah.
And when you pay the ten dollars, you're paying, your club pays ten dollars, or I think that's what it is, for the, for the pool, and that is just part of the mix. It isn't the whole pool. It's along with whomever else may be there that day, kind of. I mean, there's more structure than that, but...
Yeah, on the schedule. You know, earlier in the day, you know, at, you know, say, three to five, we have, you know, more of the pool. Once five o'clock hits, you see more families coming in with lessons. Once five o'clock hits, you see more families coming in with lessons, you know, so it's kind of a flexible arrangement, but we try and, you know, make sure that we know going into the week, going into the month, what we're expected. Our head coach has a, you know, dialogue with the manager at the pool, so if there's ever any change in schedules, you know, we work to accommodate that and vice versa.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Major.
Just some really quick math, right? Knowing that there's a lot of unknown and a lot of variables in there, so $30,000 a year, assuming 100 swimmers, divided by 12 months, would be about a $25 a month increase per swimmer, I mean, just very simple math, right? So almost to the mayor's question, what, how much of an increase per month per swimmer do you think is something that would be considered affordable and would help reduce the amount that the taxpayers have to subsidize for the swim teams?
Um, I think it's an interesting question, and I don't want to get myself in trouble because I do think it's a philosophical question that the mayor's been proposing. I'm a supporter of Parks and Rec. You know, if I ran the world, it would be free. I think that we're moving closer and closer to a pay-to-play atmosphere in youth culture, and that scares me. And so every dollar that a family has to add to their monthly budget to allow their kids to participate in sports that keeps them healthy and happy and active, I think is unfortunate. So it's, so I mean, that's not really an answer, but it's more of my personal philosophy that if we could open up all the facilities and not charge a dime, that would be my vote. I know that you guys have a tough job. I know that it's difficult to appropriate money to different departments, but I do think Parks and Rec are incredibly important to our community. And when I travel around with my kids, and I go to pools, and I go to hockey rinks, and I see the facilities, and I see that the money that other communities are putting into the facilities and the priority that they're making, I know it's doable. I know it's doable, and even in a small way, like a possible ordinance that would reduce the upcoming fees that we're seeing, you know, is helpful, and it's doable.
Thank you. Any last questions? Mr. Lawrence.
Quick question. If, and you may not know the answer, but, you know, the fee now is supposed to be $10 an hour, I thought to use the entire pool.
Currently, or FY, the last fiscal year was $660 a month, so it was a monthly fee.
All right. But is that fee adjusted if there are other users in the pool at that time?
At this point, not to my knowledge, it was just a flat fee. And we did, we did see the rates go up a few years ago. We saw our monthly rate go up a couple of years ago. We saw our swimming meet rate go up a couple of years ago, so.
So I'm going to have to recess this in just a few minutes, and I want to give Avery a opportunity to speak. So thank you. Did you have any last thing, or pretty much you'd said that?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Ms. Hafely, welcome. Would you please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood?
Yes. Hi, my name is Avery Hafely, H-A-F-E-L-E. I live in the Aurora subdivision. I'm a swimmer on the Midnight Sun swim team. I have been swimming for almost six years. I have always loved playing and swimming in the water, and that encouraged me to swim on a swim team. There are some kids on the swim team that are struggling with the price now, and if we increase the price, then they might not be able to swim. I made so many good friends on the swim team. This is the place where I feel comfortable because I made many good friends. They're more like family, because I was, I was talking to my mom a few months ago. I was saying that I was closer to my swimming friends than my school friends, because I can relate to them. And my friends, I don't have the same bond. When I was, when I am, when I am with my swimming friends, I can talk forever. I will lose many of my friends because they might not be able to afford. It's even hard to imagine the people that have multiple siblings, and they're all on the swim team. And the parents are going to pay double or triple what the new price is going to be. Or they might just take them out of swimming and find a sport that's cheaper and less fun to the kids, or might, or may not do any sports. Please consider reducing the new pool fees for our local swim teams.
Thank you, Ms. Hafely. Let's see if there are any questions for you. That was a very good job, thank you. I don't see any. Thank you both, we appreciate you coming down. So I'm at a place where I have to recess for now, until 7:00. We will reconvene, or we'll reconvene at 7:00, but there will be another chance to continue these citizens' comments af, at the, pretty much the very end of the meeting. So if anyone feels a compelling need to hang around, you'll have an opportunity to speak on items that are not on the agenda at the end of the meeting, okay? So with that, we're going to, yes? Oh, thank you, we should approve the agenda. We had such, we're out of practice here. So approval of the consent agenda passes all routine items not indicated by an asterisk on the agenda. Consent agenda items are not considered separately unless an Assembly member so requests. So does anyone need to declare a possible conflict of interest for items on the consent agenda? I see no one raising their hand. Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda before it's read? See no one saying so. Brooke, would you please read the consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, regular Assembly meeting minutes of April 12, 2018. Reconvene regular Assembly meeting minutes of April 16, 2018. Regular Assembly meeting minutes of April 26, 2018. Regular Assembly meeting minutes of May 3, 2018. Reconvene regular Assembly meeting minutes of May 10, 2018. Special Assembly meeting minutes of May 10, 2018. Special Assembly meeting minutes of May 17, 2018. Communications to the Assembly. RFP award, RFP number 18050. Facilities maintenance, multiple award task orders contract. Approval of the proposal submitted under the general contractor discipline by Alkan Builders Trust Construction, Johnson River Enterprises, and Armstrong Construction. Under the mechanical contractor discipline by Alaska Integrated Services and Central Mechanical, and under the electrical contractor discipline by Star Electric and Amped Electric and Zone Electric in the amount of $705,000. Maximum for all disciplines for the initial contract period, and an estimated total amount of $3,525,000 maximum for all disciplines if all four-one-year renewal options are exercised. Memorandum from Debbie Brady, Chief Financial Officer, regarding write-off of uncollectible taxes and other receivables. Memorandum from Mayor Castle recommending the appointment of various service area commissions. Consideration of calendar new business ordinances to be introduced in advance to public hearing, ordinance number 2018-15, and ordinance providing for the disposition of property which lies within the city of North Pole, which has been acquired through tax foreclosure, sponsor Mayor Castle, refer. Thank you. City of Fairbanks. Refer to the Committee of Hole on June 21, 2018, advance to June 28, 2018 for public hearing. Ordinance number 2016, and ordinance providing for the sale of real property acquired through tax foreclosure, sponsor Mayor Castle. Refer to the Committee of Hole on June 21, 2018, advance to June 28 for public hearing. Ordinance number 2018-17, and ordinance of the Fairbanks North Star Borough authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the borough in the amount not to exceed $66,420,000 to finance all or part of the cost of a plan of finance for capital improvements to the borough facilities, and providing for submission to the borough voters at an election to be held on October 2, 2018, of a proposition approving the plan, approving this ordinance, and ratifying the authorization of bonds, sponsor Mayor Castle. Which refer to the Finance Committee on June 21, 2018, in advance to June 28, 2018 for public hearing. Ordinance number 2018-21, and ordinance providing for a tax revenue cap revision for improvements, repair, and maintenance to Maryside Recreation Center. Sponsors, Assembly Members Cooper and Dodge. Refer to the Finance Committee on June 21, 2018, in advance to June 28, 2018 for public hearing. Ordinance number 2018-22, and ordinance providing for a tax revenue cap revision for amounts transferred or appropriated to the facilities maintenance reserve fund. Sponsors, Assembly Members Cooper and Dodge. Refer to the Finance Committee on June 21, 2018, in advance to June 28, 2018 for public hearing. Ordinance number 2018-14, and ordinance amending the Fairbanks North Star Borough Code Title 18 to define brewery, brew pub, and brew, and microbrewery, and to add brew pubs and microbreweries as permitted uses in the various zones. Sponsors, Mayor Castle and Assembly Member Logeski. Refer to the Committee of Hole on June 21, 2018, advance to June 28, 2018 for public hearing. Ordinance number 2018-12, and ordinance amending the Fairbanks North Star Borough Code Title 18 regarding agricultural and livestock in various zoning districts, including to add urban livestock and market gardens as allowable uses, and adding and amending definitions and standards, sponsor Mayor Castle. Refer to the Committee of Hole on June 21, 2018, advance to June 28, 2018 for public hearing. And ordinance number 2018-18, and ordinance amending the Fairbanks North Star Borough Code 8.04.130B to add a presumption of timely paying for taxes due. Sponsors, Assembly Member Roberts. Refer to the Finance Committee on June 21, 2018, advance to June 28, 2018 for public hearing. And ordinance number 2018-19, and ordinance amending Chapter 8.48 of the Fairbanks North Star Borough Code regarding hotel motel room penalties. Sponsor, Assembly Member Roberts. Refer to the Finance Committee on June 21, 2018, advance to June 28, 2018 for public hearing. Ordinance number 2017-20-2E, and ordinance amending the fiscal year 2018 budget by reappropriating $40,000 from the Department of Library Services in the General Fund to the Capital Project Fund for the purchase of a laptop self-checkout dispenser. Sponsor, Mayor Castle. Refer to the Finance Committee on June 21, 2018, advance to June 28, 2018 for public hearing. Ordinance number 2017-21, 20, excuse me, 2F, and ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017-18 budget by appropriating $40,000 from the Summerwood Service Area Fund Balance to the Capital Projects Fund for the ICE Overflow Repair Project. Sponsor, Mayor Castle. Refer to the Finance Committee on June 21, 2018, advance to June 28, 2018 for public hearing. And that concludes your consent agenda.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda. Second?
So it's been moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any objection to approving the consent agenda as read? Seeing none, the consent agenda is adopted. Does the body want to take a brief break before we roll on? Yeah, I'm thinking we're going to take a three-minute break, and we're going to hold ourselves Thank you, everybody. That was the closest to a three-minute break we've ever taken. I appreciate everybody working hard to do that. So we're going to call our June 14 regular Assembly meeting back to order, and we will begin with reports from our City of Fairbanks representative. Mr. Prue is welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. On Monday, June 11, the City of Fairbanks had a work session dealing exclusively with future snow plowing. Yes, it is June, but we did such a bad job last winter that we wanted to get in front of it this year at the City of Fairbanks. And at that work session, we finalized on some important things. What was the causes last year and how to make it better this year. We got behind last year from the very beginning. What we've discovered over the last two years is we get more snow earlier, it's wetter, and we get snow events later into the year. So what we did was, we had a funding mechanism. Last year, we tried to do the funding in December for the budget. We were behind, so we're going to be looking at our budget for snow plowing again to make any additions to it in August. We also went from, we added two new dump trucks. We went from two sidewalk plowing vehicles to three. We have a new AFL-CIO contract that on a snow event, they would have to give them 72 hours notice, and that is now 40 hours notice. And we also, when we hire 20 new additional employees on a snow event, we will be putting that, we have a 410 work shift, and we'll be putting them on the weekends. We'd always snow plow Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and now we'll have basically seven days a week snow plowing. So we're trying to get in front of the snow plowing better. We acquired two new snow dump sites, and we also are going out for a bid for private contractors in case we need backup for both a wet weight, a wet rate and a dry rate. So we're not going to be as bad in the future because it affects everyone. We also passed ordinance 6076, which we never expected to be needed, and that was in regards to the Polaris Building. On June, on May 25, the owner, the Polaris Hotel LLC, failed to pay the taxes on a May 28. The Fairbanks North Star Borough came into ownership through tax foreclosure of the Polaris Building. There were $54,000 owed in taxes, of which the borough's portion is approximately $36,500. The Polaris Group was formed just for this purpose. Two years ago, the City of Fairbanks looked at and initiated a purch, a, buying a purchase option on the note that was on it at a discounted price, and the philosophy was, one of two things has to happen. He has to fix or knock down the building, or he has to abandon the building. The note purchase option was for forcing him to get the building in shape. If not, we would foreclose on the building. We thought that would be the avenue to pursue. Last year, we had a similar ordinance to foreclose, to assume ownership of the property from the Fairbanks North Star Borough by paying the back taxes in case he let it go to tax foreclosure. We did not expect that to happen this year, so we really had to scramble on around May, June 7th or 8th, when we were informed that the borough was now the owner of it. So the City of Fairbanks, all of a sudden, that ordinance became very important, and we have stepped up, we have committed to raising an addition. We've, so far, the Polaris Group has raised $19,000. We have another $17,000 to go, and then we're off and running. All of a sudden, we'll have a 95,000 square foot building that's dilapidated in the middle of downtown Fairbanks, so we'll have to figure out how to knock it down. But at the same time, I want to thank the mayor, the chief of staff, members of the planning and zoning department that have been very stalwart additions to the, to the Polaris Group and helpful in the City of Fairbanks. And I got new estimates yesterday on the knockdown costs. There's $2 million in remediation for environmental contamination to be removed, and $4 million in cost to knock it down. So it's a, it's a pretty penny, but when we looked at it, it's always been in the City of Fairbanks's wheelhouse. It's a City of Fairbanks issue. In 2006, the City of Fairbanks issued a incentive for him to defer taxes and dismiss taxes for a 10-year period if he fixed it. He never did that. In 2012, the City of Fairbanks condemned the building, so there was, there was a discussion, do we just let the borough have it and walk away? But the answer was resounding no. It's our issue, we started this, we'll end it. One day, we will knock it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Shall we stop and clap? I think we should.
Yes, Van.
So I see a couple of hands. I see Mr. Lawrence, and I see Ms. Major. Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Prue, last year, the owner redeemed the property in August, right?
No, he did not. What he did was, he came in in the last week of May and paid the 2014 taxes. He still has the 90-day right and duty of redemption, but what my ordinance did, it classified it as a public-purpose property for the City of Fairbanks. So once the City of Fairbanks pays the borough the back taxes, we get a, we get a deed from the borough, and he loses his right and duty of redemption.
Okay, I'm not clear on how, maybe I'll ask, I'll ask Ms. Donovan.
Both City and Borough attorneys have had some good discussions, I believe.
So you believe you were able to cut off the owner's So, you believe you were able to cut off the owner's right of redemption?
Only, only once, only once the City of Fairbanks pays the borough for the taxes owed by the borough. Until then, he has the right and duty of redemption through August.
Owen.
Yeah, I think, I think the correct word is repurchase. He has repurchase rights, but by statute, the municipality can terminate those repurchase rights if it retains it for a public purpose, but because it's a city in a borough, the city has to pay the borough's portion of the unpaid taxes and the cost of foreclosure. So, once that happens, then his repurchase rights would be terminated, but that hasn't occurred yet.
No, it has not. And we have that amount, and I believe the additional from June 12 on, it's an additional charge of $6.92 per day of interest. So, we're about 55% there in fundraising.
So, just to be clear, the owner has the ability to repurchase up to the point where the city or the Polaris Group can, can come up with the funds to pay off the borough?
You are correct, and we've given ourselves a, basically, a three-week timeframe, we believe, we'll have it done.
All right, well, good luck.
Yes.
Ms. Major.
I want to say thank you for starting on this. No issue now. Living in the city, boundaries made me wish, last year made me wish I was in a road service area and could potentially have had better, better service. I was wondering if you could explain, so, with your contract, the 72-hour, now it's a 40-hour notice, so, so does that mean that the folks who work in that department, from the time we have a snow event, they have 40 hours before they have to respond?
They, as per the union contract with AFL-CIO, once a snow event happened and we put notice that we are going to have overtime, they could not go out on overtime for a 72-hour period. We've moved that down to a 48-hour period, so we've tightened up that window. And at the same time, there are, you know, we're all looking at budgets, and we would put them out there at, you know, 10 hours a day, seven weeks, seven days straight. And so, what we're going to do is, we're going to keep them at the 40 hours, but the additional 20 people that HR hires will go to the next 3:10, so we will have seven days in a row without overtime saving our budgets.
That's, I think that's fantastic. I mean, just even, so it's not just the roads, but also, right, the sidewalks, and I'm amazed at how many people in Fairbanks year-round use, are solely dependent on our pedestrian pathways to get around, and so, I just really appreciate you taking, because last year was, was pretty rough for, for so many folks.
We heard about it daily.
Yes.
We heard about it daily. And, and there was, it was a failure. It was just a failure, and you can't do that again. So, that's why we started it in June, what I called our late spring, or maybe it was our early fall weather that we've been experiencing.
Feels more like that. Any other questions for Mr. Prus? Seeing none, thank you, and thank you for your hard work on that Polaris Group. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And for the snow removal. That takes us to our City of North Pole representative, Mr. Scripps. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I just want to let you know that the City of North Pole is going to be hosting a 4th of July parade. It'd be Wednesday, 4th of July, obviously. The parade starts at 11:00, and it'll wind up at North Pole High School parking lot, and there's going to be vendors, and we're going to also host a softball game. It's from 1:00 to 3:00. It's the Police Department versus Ison Air Force Base Fire Department.
Super. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
That's enough for now, eh?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for Mr. Scripps? Seeing none, thank you very much. We appreciate you joining us this evening. And finally, that takes us to our school board representative, Mr. Doran. Welcome.
Great, thank you. It's nice to be here. A couple of things that, as you know, we've approved our 2018-19 budget in late May, and want to definitely say a big thank you to the Assembly and to the borough for its contribution to education. A couple of things that we're able to do with using our, some of our fund balances and some extra money from the legislature that I want to point out significantly is we were able to maintain status quo at the, for the parent teacher, or the pupil-teacher ratios at elementary school, which is significant, and to roll back the PTR for secondary, which again means we get a better service for kids. Also, we've expanded all-day kindergarten to all the schools in the district. We had been moving a few schools at a time, and now this coming year, it will be all-day kindergarten available at all the schools. Through the budget process, we got lots of ideas that we hope to continue to work on, suggestions for efficiencies, et cetera, as we move forward. And as Mr. Prus said, you start early, and so, we are thinking early on and heading into When we talk about budget and services to kids, I just wanted to share that I've had a chance this year to, to visit all the schools and the school programs and most of the graduations, and it is truly impressive to see the variety of things happening in the classrooms, on the front line, what teachers are doing, what students are doing. You know, I could regale you for a couple of days, so I won't, but in terms of just going in, having a chance in, in a whole variety of classrooms, talking to students, what they're doing, what they're learning, what they're creating, seeing some of the products that the, the teachers are doing, hearing the graduation speeches was really impressive, you know, and, and the enthusiasm of the graduates, not simply because they were finishing high school and ready to move on, but talking about their achievements, and sometimes their struggles to hang in there, but sticking with it and their hopes for the coming year. So, I think that says a lot about what they're getting in those relationships with teachers and other educators in the school. Along those lines, there are a couple, few seniors who were just short a credit or two, and the district has a program through the Career Education Center, we call it an intercession program for graduates, where they can come in and finish up those credits. And so, we will have another graduation for those students on Friday, June 29, 7 o'clock at Herring Auditorium. It's open to the public, and again, it's that opportunity to really support students who have not given up, and, and the teachers to say, yep, we're going to be there for you, and, and have that there. There are a whole variety of summer activities available for kids throughout Fairbanks, and there's information on that. There's a guide on the News Miner website and also on the district website, so if parents are looking for additional opportunities for kids, to check those out for a whole variety of summer programs and activities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Let's see if there are questions. Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
Well, Mr. Doran, I want to express my appreciation for the school board, you know, adopting a very responsible budget this year, and, you know, I'm, I'm happy to see it.
Our pleasure.
Any other questions or comments? I would associate myself with Mr. Lawrence's remarks. I, I am grateful for the budget that you all adopted, and I've had the opportunity to go to some of the events that have student work highlighted and have been very impressed at the diversity and the quality of the, of the students' work. So, I agree and applaud the many programs, and I'm glad that we're able to keep them going forward. Any other questions for Mr. Doran? Seeing none, thank you for being with us this evening. And that takes us to special orders, the public hearing, public hearing, and we're going to start with marijuana license new retail store. It's license 13949. It's on page 126 of our packet. It's called Wishful Things LLC, doing business as Wishful Things LLC, 3505 Airport Way. And Mayor Castle, do you have a staff report?
Yes, I'm sorry. We, it's been a while since we've done this. Mr. Tackey, do you have a conflict of interest you wish to declare?
Yeah, as I own a product manufacturing facility, this licensee might be a customer of mine.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Quest.
Thank you. My in-laws are licensed cultivators, and this Wishful Things could potentially be a customer of their business.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you declaring that conflict, and we'll consider both of them to be a conflict. So, now that we have seven of us on the dais, we will ask for a staff report, Mr. Castle.
Thank you. We'll go to our chief of staff, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Dodge, the borough administration has reviewed the new retail store license for Wishful Things LLC, DVA Wishful Things LLC. The property is zoned consistent with its intended use. Just as a note to the Assembly, the particular facility for this operation, there was a setback issue with the, with the property, and Ms. Nelson is available to answer the technical details if there's questions. We didn't think that that was a reason enough to protest the license because it was related to just the use in the zoning area, so we went ahead and, the borough administration's recommendation overall is to recommend no protest, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. So, with that, I'm going to open up public hearing, and I have Gary Evans signed up. Mr. Evans, if you'd like, and if anyone else wishes to speak on Wishful Things, it's a good time to come forward. Mr. Evans, welcome. Please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
Gary Evans, E.V.A.N.S. I'm not here to speak about Wishful Things. I'm here to speak on behalf, so I don't think that's time yet.
It is, but we need your neighborhood.
125 Kenneth Street.
Okey-dokey, and are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, then, then you'll have 10 minutes.
Okay.
Please speak.
I'm just here to answer any questions you guys have about it mainly. I don't know what you guys want to know.
Okay, let's see. I presume that concludes your testimony, and you're looking for questions. I don't see, yep, there's Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Evans, what can you tell us about this setback issue?
So, I don't know.
And you can move back from the mic just a minute.
Much about the setback issue. I haven't heard about it until now, to be honest. We had the zoning permit issued. Everything was flawless, so to my understanding, there was no setback issue to begin with. Other than that, I, that's all I can answer to that.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Evans? Seeing none, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wish to speak on Wishful Things LLC, marijuana retail store application? Seeing, oops, I'm going to turn the mic up. Seeing none, so I'm going to close public comment on Wishful Things. For motion?
Move to file no protest.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Cooper. Discussion, debate, Mr. Gray.
I seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr., did I, am I mixing you up again? Okay, Mr. Gray seconded. Thank you. Any discussion, debate? Mr. Lawrence.
For Ms. Nelson, could you tell us about the setback issue?
Well, I was just trying to pull up the, the packet, but basically, when a use goes into an existing building, we don't currently evaluate whether that building meets setbacks when it's already there. We do look at it if it's a new structure. So, really, the only time that the setbacks come into play is if they apply for grandfather rights, and that's usually on the purchase or sale of the building. So, we have hundreds, if not thousands, of buildings that were setback violations, and we don't, again, we don't know whether they're grandfathered or not until they come in and apply. So, as far as a new business going in, we just don't analyze that. That's why we issued the zoning permit that's in your packet.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Doran.
Yeah, I'll just let the Assembly know that the zoning permit in the packet actually does note the setback and a site visibility violation, and I did talk to Mr. Spillman about it. I apologize, because I think Christine was at the office at the time. And her, she's accurate that they do review it for the use because that is the change, but they also do note the setback violations if they're known on that permit so that they put the applicant on notice of that, and that would trigger them to know to come apply for grandfather rights or take other action if they needed.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, clerk, it looks like we're ready to vote. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Logeski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge? Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
6-1.
It's approved 6-1. I should say that no protest is approved 6-1. So, that takes us to ordinance 2018-06, an ordinance amending Chapter 18.104 Fairbanks North Star Borough Code regarding notification of rezoning, conditional uses and variances, and amending procedures for rezoning and conditional use permits. The sponsor is Assembly member Roberts. It's on page 132. There is additional information in your yellow folders. Assembly member Roberts, would you like to give us a staff report?
Yes, so, the origin of this ordinance came up this last year. We've had this problem in the community while where you get big land use conflicts by uses going into neighborhoods that are residential in nature, like the gun range that happened a few years ago that was right on a residential, small lot in a residential neighborhood right next to houses. And we addressed some of those with, like, our zoning for strip clubs, but, but we didn't really come up with a definition of residential except by zoning, and that's not adequate for Fairbanks since 97% of the land by area is owned general use. So, what we found out this last election that I never realized before is that the difference between a conditional use permit process and a rezon process is 30 days. So, there was an argument floated about by some that they should just rezon. Well, it turns out it's broken, and they can't actually do that. Oh, they can do that, but it's too late then. The use is in there. And we've seen that in, for example, the neighborhood with the gun range. We passed a gun range ordinance based on that for the future, but that neighborhood never bothered to apply to get rezoned residential. It was too late. What they were concerned about that was already there, and so, they had no incentive in their minds to come in and apply for that. So, what this does is this fixes it in the best way I thought I could find to make this process worked without changing a lot of code. This doesn't change the conditional use code or the rezon code except in the matter of timing. So, what happens here is someone will, with this ordinance, someone will apply for a conditional use. There is then a notification area around that conditional use, people who get notified. They may then file this letter of intent to initiate a rezon. They then have 30, they have 30 days to file that letter in, and then from the day that they file that intent, they have 30 days in which to do the rezon. So, a max of 60 days, but obviously, it could be much less. So, then they are able to go out and try to actually get the rezon process going, which requires 50% of signatures from the neighbors and getting with the planning department and figuring out what kind of zone you actually want, which is a little more complicated than people might understand. And so, there's a process they go through. They've got 30 days, and if they haven't got a completed rezon application in, then the conditional use moves on as normal and goes in front of the planning commission. If the rezon application is completed fully, that application is completed, then they go through the rezoning process, and after that decision's made, then the conditional use may go on or may have to be altered based on the results of the rezon. So, this sets up a notification process for all that. It sets up timelines, and, and that's what it does. So, I have quite a bit more to say on why this would be needed and the expectations put on people to know all of state, federal, and local law, but I'll get to that when we get to the main motion and debate. For now, this is the basics of this ordinance, and I hope that's enough for the public to be able to testify on it.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I'm going to open public hearing on ordinance number 2018-06. I have three people signed up, so we'll begin by calling those three people forward, and then we'll let anyone else wishes to speak come forward. Ms. Robbins, I have you signed up first, and then I have Gary Evans. Did you, thank you. So, welcome, Ms. Robbins. Please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
Thanks. My name is Christine Robbins, R-O-B-B-I-N-S. I live off Sky Ridge. I'm here to support ordinance 2018-06. This would fix a timeline issue where if a neighborhood would like to change their zoning in order to keep out a business that would drastically change the character of their neighborhood, then they would have the opportunity to do so. As it is now, the time it takes a neighborhood to rezon, the business has usually already been approved, and that's a problem, but this ordinance can fix that. This is what I would consider to be This is what I would consider to be a good neighbor ordinance. If a business or individual wants to change the neighborhood, then it would behoove them to talk to people that were there first. Sorry. Yes, it does matter who was there first. When someone moves into a neighborhood, we are conscious that it might not stay that way forever, but we can still try our best to keep it that way, the way that drew it to us in the first place. This ordinance is actually a nice way to handle the timing issue, whereas if it doesn't, then I know probably the only recourse is litigation, where a stay of execution is granted or an after-the-fact nuisance lawsuit. So, sorry. This ordinance would help avoid future problems, and I encourage you to pass it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins. Let's see if there are questions for you. Uh, Mr. Lawrence.
Ms. Robbins, this ordinance would significantly delay a property owner who submits or seeks a conditional use permit. It could delay it by, you know, over half a year. Does that give you any concern?
Well, if it wasn't there first, you know, if-- just imagine you're in a neighborhood, and someone wants to set up a shooting range next door, or a kennel. And as the person who was there first, you're thinking, this is going to cause a lot of noise, a lot of traffic, a lot of stink that wasn't there before. So I personally don't care if they have to wait, if they have to be inconvenienced, because they're really going to be inconvenienced me for the rest of my time in that neighborhood. So I have no sympathy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Robbins? Seeing none, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down. And I have Joe Burns in the next. Mr. Evans, please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood. You'll have three minutes.
Gary Evans, E.V.A.N.S., 125 Kenneth Street. I don't support these new adjustments to this ordinance. I think they are exceedingly unethical in a way to rip the rug out from anyone underneath trying to seek a conditional use permit. Could be partially way through the process. I think that if people want their lot rezoned, they need to start working on it avidly, not just because someone all of a sudden comes in that they don't agree with. Now, all of a sudden, they need to get the ball rolling on rezoning these things, just to keep it general use, because they might want to do something with it someday that someone else might not agree with. But the second someone else steps in to do something that's legal that they don't agree with, all of a sudden, they can rip the rug out. And I don't think that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Let's see if there are questions for you. Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate you coming down and speaking with us. So I have an empty seat if anyone else wishes to speak on ordinance number 2018-06. Now is a good time to come speak. And Mr. Burns, welcome. Please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
Joe Burns, B.Y.R.N.E.S. I'm at 696 Slater Drive. I'm testifying in support of ordinance 2018-06, which would allow for a pause after a conditional use is applied for, to give residents the opportunity to rezone their neighborhood in response to an incompatible development. In the past several years, residents have complained of developments moving into their neighborhoods that simply were inconceivable when they originally chose to move there. These neighborhoods may not be zoned residential, but have a residential characteristic that is simply incompatible with certain uses. However, when these residents voice concern before the Planning Commission, to date, they've only been met with unsympathetic ears who say they should have known better before moving in. By the time a rezone effort is complete, it's too late to prevent an unwanted development. This proposal gives residents who are highly motivated the ability to take action that will protect their neighborhood and property values. Residents seeking to rezone would still need to put in an application and gather signatures from their neighbors and residents-- excuse me, and residents would only be brought to that point if the Planning Commission failed to put improper safeguards to satisfy residents' concerns. So for that, I urge you to support ordinance 2018-06.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Let's see if we have any questions. Yes, Mr. Tecky has a question for you.
Hey, Mr. Burns, so do you share the same mentality that Ms. Robbins articulated earlier, that the first person there has more property rights than someone that purchased one after they've done their due diligence?
So if I am a potential homeowner, and I want to go to a plot of land, and right next to it is a marijuana cultivation facility, and I'm like, well, I don't want that cultivation facility in there, but I want that plot of land, I want to buy that plot of land so I can live there, but I don't want that cultivation facility there. I think that because the cultivation facility was there first, they should have priority on saying that, well, we're going to stay here regardless, because you're coming in second. So I do feel that the way the code is now, it does create a situation where people are-- neighbors are being pitted against each other, and residents are being pitted against businesses, and I don't think that's good. And I think adjustments like this could avoid that situation in the future.
Mr. Cooper has a question for you.
Thanks, Mr. Burns. Do you think that a person buying a parcel of property has an obligation to know the zoning of the parcel they're buying?
Well, I would want to know what the zoning is, but I accept that sometimes you just don't conceive of what could possibly go in there until one day you get a letter that's saying, hey, I'm going to put in a gun range or a strip club or something. And that never occurred to you. And I think that it creates a potential conflict that we could try to resolve with this kind of ordinance.
Any other questions for Mr. Burns? Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
And so I have another empty seat if anyone wishes to speak. Now is a good time. Please give us your name, your add-- spell your last name, and your neighborhood.
My name is Mason Evans. My last name is spelled E.V.A.N.S. My address is 814 Gold Mine Trail.
Thank you.
I'm against the ordinance. Coming from a business owner's point of view, real estate is an investment for a lot of people. What brings money to Fairbanks? The thought of growth, the thought of expansion, generations to come to have opportunities. Now, if Fairbanks comes out with these borough ordinances saying, you can purchase property, you can make that commitment, you can make that investment, however, if you ever go to make a move with it, anybody within 1,000 feet gets to say if you can do that or not? I'll tell you right now, from a businessman's point of view, I'm not going to invest any more money into Fairbanks, because who's going to take that risk? Nobody. That's just economics 101. Another one would be it goes against everything America stands for, such as that your right to do what you please with your property. Everybody in this room, if you're concerned with zoning, start rezoning your property now, because you don't know what's going to happen in 10, 20 years. Yeah, there are strip clubs, yeah, there are going to be liquor stores. However, there's also great things that'll come to town, such as farms. So, you know, everybody's talked about turning the Polaris Building into this vertically-integrated farming place, you know. So I think focusing only on the negative to support something that will stronghold potential people who are only trying to better Fairbanks is a very ill move. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Let's see if there are-- Ms. Major has a question for you.
I'm just really struggling with this, so I want to ask your question. So I think part of it is, so you talked about it from a business owner's perspective and property rights. Would you have the same concern if you, you know, if someone were putting something in your backyard, right? So you live in the Gold Mine Trail area. If someone were to put maybe a gun range, right, right next to your house, and what that would do to your property values potentially, or your ability to resell your property, because it is an investment for you as well, would you be concerned about that?
If I was concerned about that, I wouldn't have bought my house where I wanted it. I meant, I know that my neighbors could come in right behind me, put a gun range on one side, a strip club on the other, and a cultivation on the other side, and it wouldn't, honest, it wouldn't matter to me. I bought my lot and the size of my lot because it gives me the distance from my neighbors to where it doesn't matter what they're doing, because it doesn't affect me. That's kind of the point of buying property. All of a sudden, when you allow others to come in and have an opinion as to what happens behind my property lines, that's not up to you. That's not up to anybody on this board.
No further questions? I have one question for you. If, do you think that if someone were buying a piece of property that would need a rezone, that they might put money down contingent upon the rezone being adopted?
Yes, but that's a risk they know beforehand. When you purchase a property that is general use and you plan to put a business on there, and then you say, well, you got to purchase it first, then you got to roll the dice and hope that your neighbors agree with you? No. But if you purchase a piece of property, and then you're going to, and you know very well that, hey, I need to coerce the general population here to agree with me, that's a risk you knowingly take. You've knowingly taken. You know, no one goes up to a blackjack table and gets surprised when they, you know, on the outcome. It's a 50/50 shot.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
And I have one more empty seat. If anyone wishes to speak, please give us your name, spell your last name, and give us your neighborhood.
Morgan Evans, E.V.A.N.S., 125 Kenneth Street, Fairbanks, Alaska.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I go through the-- I've bought a bunch of commercial properties this year, I don't know, half a dozen or so, fixed them up and doing this and doing that, which you guys will get more money too. But I take the zoning maps, and I mean, most, all the properties I've bought has been for marijuana. So it's kind of, you know, but I take the zoning maps, and I go around and drive around at night, just looking which would be the best spot, where it's legal, where it's not. The last one, the last one, me and Gary went and looked at it at 9:00 or 10:00 on a Sunday night, and I'd bought it by 10:00 the next day. So, I mean, it's fixed up building, it's nice now, it's been abandoned for a long time. I, you know, I wouldn't go purchase a building like that and fix it up if I, if it was a gamble. So that's all I've got to say. Like I said, I've done, I don't know, half a dozen of them this year, so that's kind of where I'm at. I meant, why would you gamble on something like that? I wouldn't. I mean, I'm not going to stick $200,000 or $300,000 out on a maybe. You got to do your homework, and the people that have the residence got to do their homework too. I mean, if they want to rezone, rezone it. I'm just going off the zoning that's there. And I've put a lot of money in this year just with that. That would stop me cold in my tracks from doing any more, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. See, Ms. Major has a question for you, and then Mr. Lawrence.
I guess, have you, as you look at properties, and you look at the, sort of the general characteristic of the neighborhood surrounding the properties, and so you just said, do you typically drive around at night, you'll purchase maybe the next morning? Have you ever thought to even just, you know, talk to perhaps some of the neighbors, see what they would think of the potential business that you would be looking at putting in that property if you were to buy it? Or have you given any thought to what that business might do to the general nature of the all-use neighborhood loosely, because I guess it could be, you know, whether it's an industrial zone, a general use zone? Have you given any thought or consideration for that?
Yeah, I have. Like the Chino Hot Springs, one up there, Mr. Moore, the guy that lives right beside it, I went, we went and talked to him first about it. You know, he's an older guy, older gentleman, he was 100% for it, you know. Go, I mean, he comes over and helps us out. He don't smoke weed or anything. And like I said, I'm not having anything to do with the marijuana industry, but I do buy the properties. I buy a lot of the properties. Yeah, I talked to them. Working with the Cripple Creek store up there, we purchased that building, talked to the neighbors, a couple of the other people that owned the neighborhood in the back, doing some work with them on the driveways and redoing the driveways, that we work with the borough with the zoning on that. Yeah, we've talked to, we've talked to a lot of people. And some of them, like the last one I told you I bought the next morning, that happened to be on Wells Street, and so there really is no neighbors or anything with that one. But I do look at that map, you know. I meant, I do look at it and see what is, what is the best spot for that business or any business, and go off of that. People would stop dead in their tracks if they think that any commercial building would, you know, anybody can protest anything for any reason. I meant, let's just face it, that's the nature of the beast. But yeah, no, this, it would, it would stop dead, not just, you know, my family's been in commercial real estate here for 40 years. I meant, yeah, it would, it would, it would stop.
Okay, I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Mr. Evans, when you make these decisions to buy commercial property, you're aware of the zone?
Correct.
And of that particular property? And have you bought property, properties that were in the general use zone?
Um, yes.
Okay, and you're aware then that if a residence is, you know, if it's attached, or, you know, if it's near enough to that property, then a conditional use permit will be required?
Yes, yes. We, same with the Cripple Creek. We went through the zoning with the Cripple Creek property going out towards Esther.
So you went, you've gone through that process?
Yes, correct. Yes.
Are you in a position, I mean, have you ever conditioned your purchase of property on getting that conditional use permit first?
Um, what do you, I don't under--
In other words, going to the seller, owner of the property and saying, hey, I want to sign a purchase agreement to buy your property, but before we close, I will do the work, you will sign the documents that will allow me to go through, you know, to apply for a conditional use permit--
Yeah, yeah.
--so I can be sure to use it the way I want to use that property.
Right. Yes, that's in the contract. And usually, usually we've already, I've already done my homework on it before I even purchased it. I meant, you know, you got to do the 500 feet, or, you know, around, make sure that, you know, there's no churches or schools or daycares.
I'm talking about in a situation where it's, where there's residences nearby in a, in a general use zone.
Mm-hmm.
You're, in those instances--
Oh.
This ordinance here is dealing with the conditional use permit process.
Right, right.
So I want to be sure I know how much you have, you know, utilized that process.
Yeah, yes, we went through one, the Cripple Creek one, for sure. I meant, that was a general use, and we went through all the, everything with that.
Did you do that before or after you closed on the property?
We did that. We didn't close until after it went through. We didn't, we wouldn't close.
So you didn't take the risk. I mean, in other words, you, you did not want to risk this conditional use permit being denied.
Exactly. We had a, we had a, we had a contract, but it was not until it was, it was purcha-- you know, until the zoning went through. Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Evans? Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wish to speak on ordinance 2018-06? Seeing no one coming forward, we're going to close public hearing. Look for motion?
Move 2018-06?
Seconded.
Moved by Mr. Roberts and seconded by Mr. Logeski. Mr. Roberts?
Okay, so a lot to go over. First, on some of the stuff covered in testimony that might have been confusing to some who don't understand exactly what this ordinance is about, it has nothing to do with commercial businesses being put somewhere. It has to do with conditional uses. Those are extremely limited, and all of those are set by the Assembly. So what we're doing here is we're saying if the Assembly says, has put in code at some point that this, we think is something that might be in conflict and create land use conflict, we set up a conditional use process to try to mitigate some of that conflict. And so this ordinance is about affecting things that are at that level. It's not just any business, you know. They were just putting in a daycare or something, I don't know if there's conditions for daycare, but in a lot of places, that probably wouldn't be a big deal. This is just for businesses and other uses, like people getting a lot of dogs. If you get enough dogs, you got to get a conditional use. If you're going to have 30 dogs in a residential neighborhood, you've probably got to get a conditional use. And I don't know, I'm not trying to quote the code here. I'm just saying, that's the serious level, something that's, when you think of a residential neighborhood, you don't think of living next to this. Okay? And so we've had, and we've had many of those cases. There are many conditional use cases based on dogs on the books. In fact, it's one of the largest areas of conditional uses that I've seen. And then there's other uses, like there's strip clubs, there's pot shops, and there's gun ranges. So if the neighbors don't care, that was brought up, that, talk to the neighbors, the neighbors are actually helpful, well, in that case, they're not going to rezone. Remember, the neighbors have to agree to rezone. neighbors have to agree to rezon. One person doesn't do it. They just say, "Hey, give us a chance." Then they've got to see if their neighbors actually want to do it. And that may or may not happen. So, as Mr. Lawrence brought out in questioning, you know, most people who are buying land, they are doing their due diligence, and so they know if there's going to be a problem, and they wouldn't risk buying a property for a specific purpose that requires a conditional use without making it conditional on getting that conditional use. So they know the risk, they're businessmen, they take that risk, and this is just part of it. This doesn't increase risk at all, because it's, it's, it's still a process they have to go through. They still don't know if they're going to get through this process till the end, and they don't purchase the property generally until that point. What this really does is it, it allows a neighborhood to define itself as residential. You know, we were trying to come up a couple of years ago when we were doing the pot zoning laws, on how to define a residential neighborhood. We had done something when we did the strip club laws a few years before, to kind of put something in there to, to kind of protect residential neighborhoods. And then, when it came to pot stores, knowing that would be much more voluminous and a lot more of them out there, we were trying to figure out a way to define residential. I sat down with the attorneys, with the planning department, and we just couldn't come up with a good way. And that's on me. I should have tried harder. But, you know what? We didn't come up with a definition then. So what we ended up with was a conditional use process for that also, when it's being put in a residential neighborhood, there's a chance there's a conditional use hearing, and therefore, we thought that would trigger, and the intent was that the planning commission would see that and say, "Well, that's not, this is a residential neighborhood, that's not the character." Well, it's because we misunderstood the conditional use process, which basically sets conditions. Though, they are sometimes turned down. So, I have a whole spreadsheet of those. So what this does is it lets the people who live in the neighborhood define, define that neighborhood. And what I really want to say for the Assembly is that we need to have compassion on people. When we have an expectation that they will know all federal, state, and local laws, and that's the duty of every citizen, we are putting burdens on people that they cannot bear. None of us know all those laws. In fact, as has been pointed out by many people, all of us every day are violating some law we don't even know about. There's too many of them. We couldn't fit all the laws in this room. It's just too much for anyone to handle. Now, there are some people who know about zoning, but usually it's the people who have gone through the process, because something happened and they were involved in a zoning issue, or a good friend was, or something. It's someone who is impacted in some way, or someone like involved in politics where we have to learn about zoning. I certainly didn't know much about zoning and didn't know my zoning before I got on this. I didn't think about it. I had no idea. They actually expected you to get a permit before you build your house. And I know a lot of people who build houses without getting a permit, so I know that's still happening. It's, it's one of those things that there's a lot of detail in the law, and it takes coming in and talking to the planning department, the professionals, to actually figure out what you can and can't do with your land. So, what you end up with is, is in effect, a guy, Nassim Taleb, wrote a series of book, books, and one of them called The Black Swan, which, these books should be read by anyone in government. He didn't write them about government, but they really point out why big corporations and governments make so many mistakes and have such a hard time. But there's a thing called A Black Swan, and that saying came out of the fact that nobody used to think there were black swans. They were all white, till they found, got to Australia and found there were black swans. The word got out. So, to them, that was an event they couldn't have predicted. Nobody could have predicted a black swan. But you end up with those kind of events that can't be predicted because they've never happened, like, like the Twin Towers or something like that. These black swan events, and the market crashes deeper than it's ever crashed. Nobody predicts that. And so therefore, they can't, they can't judge for that risk. So when a homeowner comes in, most people aren't thinking, okay, now in Alaska, we think a little different, right? But imagine a lot of people come from the United States. They're not thinking they're going to get 30 dogs in the middle of their neighborhood on a residential lot, barking and stinking up the place, and they just have no concept of that, because they haven't had that experience before. Most people are not thinking, certainly the people in that neighborhood who have got a gun range right in a very small lot in a residential neighborhood, they were not thinking that that could happen to them. They, that risk wasn't even in their mind. It was a black swan event for them. What this does is this says, "You don't have to know all of the law. You don't have to be completely conversant in how all this works. We're not going to put that burden on you, though it'd be a good idea if you get ahead, and hopefully we can get more of the word out." You know, we advertise a lot for air quality, and we're still amazed at how much money we've put in and tried to get the word out, and people don't get the word. And we don't have any kind of money like that to spend towards promoting zoning. So, it's really hard to get people to recognize these details of what they need to do, if they're worried about these events that they can't imagine are going to happen. Think about that. It's just, it's inconceivable, that was a word being used, and is. It's inconceivable for those people that they could end up with this in their neighborhood. So, one of the goals of the Assembly, a couple, two years ago, they set in where they changed the fee so that you could apply for a rezone for your neighborhood to zone it into a residential zone, and we wouldn't charge you, because we wanted to encourage people to zone themselves residentially. And I don't know if anyone, except for one neighborhood that was impacted, that found out they were too late, has taken advantage of that. The neighborhood that got the gun range in it didn't take advantage of it, because it's too late. Then, the beast is there. The thing that is destroying their peace is there already, and for them, it's too late, and they just give up. That's just the way, you know, it's the way people work. I'm not going to judge them on that. I'd still think it'd be a good idea for them to do that, to protect against other things that might happen. But, you know, we have a transitory population, and a lot of people figure they're just going to move. But we've gotten plenty of testimony from people who've been retired and want to live in the neighborhoods, and now they're living in a miserable situation. I mean, I sat down with a lady this last year who has a neighbor who got a bunch of dogs, who's uphill, and the water's carrying all this stuff downhill, and it's a really bad situation for her. I didn't have any real answers for her, but if they ever, and this was looking at maybe going to a conditional use, though I don't think it had been done yet, but if it ever did, you know, this is something that they might have a chance of becoming a more residential neighborhood, if that was the hope. These kind of situations happen, and, but people don't have a way, once that process is started. They're suddenly locked in, and they are hopeless about it, because once they talk to planning, they'll find out that they can't do anything about it. So this is to give people hope, and I would ask you to have compassion on the people who just want to live in the residential neighborhood they chose to live in. And I guess the last thing I'll point out is that I think this will actually be used very little, because a lot of people up here like their general use, and they're not going to give it up. But for those who want that kind of neighborhood, this gives them their opportunity without the burden of expectations of having to know all of the zoning laws that we have, among all the other laws. Thank you.
I have Mr. Tackey next.
All right, thank you. I'd like to seriously contest with the Black Swan characterization of different conditional uses. It's not so unpredictable when it's listed in our code as a conditional use. That's going to happen in those particular zones. So to say it comes out of nowhere is a rather mischaracterization of the potential options of what could come about inside those zones. Also, along the same lines with the whole rezoning after the beast is already there, I think a lot of it is that, A, if someone was very opposed to having that kind of use within their, their residential, residentially characterized zone, they would go through the entire process to actually rezone to not permit more beasts, if you will, to be inside that area. But I think that what happens with a lot of these individuals, they find out that those people, when they go knocking on doors to GU1 owners, they find out that they don't want to be rezoned, because, "Hey, I actually can have a shooting range here. I might do that." So I think that that's kind of the characteristic you see in Alaska when it comes to our GU1. Also, I think that, like, this ordinance is pretty much dead on arrival, because there's so many unanswered questions about it. I asked a question at the work session, and everyone kind of shrugged their shoulders in regards to the fact that, A, is the entire zone immediately off limits to all conditional uses then? Once someone files a letter of intent to do a rezone, how many different people can do letters of intents to rezone? When is the timeline for that to actually kick in and start? Are all other conditional use permits just immediately stayed as well if they're completely unrelated? I think there's way too many unanswered questions for this to even be entertained. So, those are my positions. I'm definitely voting against this.
Mr. Cooper.
Thanks. Well, I appreciate the problem Mr. Roberts is trying to solve here, but I don't think this is the right solution. I think part of it is my, you know, property background, this kind of runs contrary to typical land use development and planning. You know, zoning provides kind of a guideline, so people know what they're getting into, and they know what they're buying. It provides predictability and consistency in the process. And, you know, I think that, that people do need to have their personal responsibility to know how the property that they own or are about to buy is zoned, and, you know, and if, if you're purchasing a parcel and it's not zoned the way you want, then it should be on you to try and get it rezoned. You know, I, I think, this, this really goes to, to areas that are zoned general use. And I think therein lies the issue, because everybody loves GU until somebody wants to do something with their property that they don't like. And, and, you know, this, we've talked about this a lot, I'll say it again. If people have property that's zoned general use that's residential, they ought to get it rezoned. And I think that probably one of the reasons people, we don't see a lot of people coming in asking to rezon GU is because they really like being able to do what they want with their property. And, and so I think that the, you know, Mr. Roberts focuses on the residential, the effects on the residential areas that are zoned GU, and I, I have some sympathy for that perspective, because there are residential areas that are zoned GU. And perhaps there, we need to go back and look at what residential means and, and having some form of designation for residential. But when we say, we apply this broadly over all GU areas, I think that is just, that's too broad, because people who own, you know, 10-acre parcels in the middle of nowhere that are zoned GU, and somebody comes in and, you know, stops the process, I think that that, that is impeding on people's property rights too far the other way. So, I, I don't support it in its present form. Thanks.
Okay, so I have Ms. Major, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Gray. Ms. Major.
So I, I will agree with Mr. Cooper to the extent that I, you know, I appreciate what Mr. Roberts was trying to do with this, this ordinance. And I think we even heard last week from the Chief of Staff that, that there's this, there's a recognition that there is a problem, and we're not really sure what to do with it. I'm still, I'm still struggling with this, though, because I, I do agree, I agree that there's a problem. I agree that something needs to be done. I'm not sure that this ordinance as proposed is the right way to get there, but I, I really want to see us find a solution that helps protect the rights of everybody, right? So the folks who truly believed that they were moving into sort of a residential neighborhood and what that meant to them, with balanced against business owners and ways to see our economy grow. So, I'm not sure yet how I'm going to vote on this, but I agree that it's something that needs to be worked on.
Thank you. I have Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Gray, and Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, I think I concur with Mr. Cooper, Mr. Tackey, that, well, first of all, let me express the opinion that Mr. Roberts, in proposing this ordinance, and in supporting it, I think is, is, is pointing out or is highlighting that the conditional uses that most concern people in this community. Marijuana businesses, dogs, shooting ranges. And I have to admit that, you know, I asked, I asked Ms. Dolan in the work session, you know, can we, can we focus in on specific conditional uses? And she said, you know, she, she recommended against it, because I think it's going to end up making this a very arbitrary process that will subject us to, to, to court, you know, court action, and possibly have this, you know, have the, have the ordinance be struck. And I would like to point out that because this ordinance would apply to all conditional use permits, I was just looking up the code, a residential estate, two and four, those conditional uses include daycares, hostels, professional offices, group homes, community gardens. For a multi, for a MFO, you know, which is office, you know, multi, you know, which is a combination of, of home and office use, the conditional uses includes parking lots and medical centers. So, that's the problem. This, this ordinance is going to affect all of those conditional uses. And it, it really creates a straitjacket for the person, for the property owner who is wanting to, to develop their property or use their property in one of these ways. And so, you know, for that reason, I'm going to have to vote against this ordinance. But, you know, I wish there was a way of addressing these, the concerns of residential property owners and GU with regards to some of these major, you know, these three, three uses. But I don't think this is the way to do it. I think this goes overboard.
So next we have Mr. Gray, then the Mayor, and then Mr. Roberts.
Well, first I want to thank Mr. Cooper, because he warned me before I ran for the Assembly that, that zoning issues was going to be a, a big topic, especially general use. So, I do see that there is a problem here. I think that there's education needed. I think that people definitely need to evaluate the zoning that they're in now, and they need to gather the support to rezon if they want to. As Mr. Tackey pointed out, the definitions of what's allowed, what isn't allowed, and what's conditionally allowed is in code. If there's some way that we as a, as a body or as the borough can come up with some sort of cheat sheet or matrix we can send out and educate people about, that would be great, or have on the website, perhaps. I struggle with some of the sentiment that, perhaps one person's or a group of persons' property rights has priority over another's, in this case, if, if someone's done their due diligence and is trying to get a business or something else established. And, and I see, you know, especially when we went over this, this timeline that was given to us at the work session especially, and that we have in front of us, that I see this as adding potentially more layers of government, which I find kind of interesting and ironic in some ways. But for many of the reasons proposed, I can't support this ordinance as is. Thanks.
Okay, I have Mr. Mayor, then Mr. Roberts, and Mr. Quest.
So, I would concur. I think we have an issue with the way things are going on this, and we're considering a number of different solutions. This isn't one of them, however. One solution that we are, or potential action we're considering is, is a general broadcast mailing to everybody, a little postcard going out to everybody with GU1 land to say, "Are you aware that you could have a shooting range next door?" Or, all the other many different options. And if any of this concerns you, you know, you can rezon or come down to planning and chat. And so, we're, we're talking about developing a, a postcard like that to send out, to try to better educate the public on both the issue, the problem, and potential solutions, because we do have solutions. We have defined what a neighborhood is, and we have a lot of different definitions for different types of neighborhood. And, you know, there's RE2, and there's RE5, and there's RA, and there's multifamily, and all that kind of stuff. And so you can define what kind of neighborhood you want to have, and you want to do it upfront, is the issue. This ordinance is the exact opposite of something I really believe in, and that's grandfather rights. When you buy a piece of property, it comes with some rights, and you have those rights. And if your neighbors want to rezon, you can maintain your rights to a certain degree, things that you've done if you've built something or whatever, and you can lock that in. And this is the opposite of that. That's letting the neighbors after the fact decide that, "Well, they don't like what you're doing, and we're going to pull the rug out from under you." And, and I don't think that's appropriate at all. And so I definitely am opposed to this as it's written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have Mr. Roberts, and then Mr. Quest.
So I just wanted to mention two of the things Mr. Tackey brought up. First off, as far as the knowledge of the code, that just gets back to my point of placing burdens. So now, not only do they need to understand zoning, they've got to read our code. Okay, that's a work in and of itself. And I mean, I do it a lot. And, but very few people are going to have the desire, the ability, and even know where to get the code. I know, because I have people who say, "Where can I find this of the code?" And I go find it for them and give them the reference, because they don't know where to find it online. And so, I think that's a, you know, that's something that we shouldn't expect, and in effect, we don't. Community planning, I think, makes some brochures on some of, some topics to make it easier for people that I guess, I don't just hand them the code. And they explain it to them, because the code can be complex for those who don't, especially the zoning code, the way it's laid out. You've got to understand how zoning works to really read through that code. And then as far as talking about how it won't matter, maybe they're not going to do the zoning because the neighbors didn't want to do it anyway, and that's what's really going on. Well, in that case, it won't matter, is what I'm saying. They're not going to do the rezon, they're not going to do the, probably won't do the letter of intent, certainly won't do the rezon. It's, there's just going to be a slow speed bump in the way of going through the conditional use process. You know, this doesn't stop any of that unless the neighbors decide they want to really define themselves as being residential, unless they're given that opportunity. Thank you.
I have Mr. Quest, and then Mr. Lajewski.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have some comments of my own, but I'm curious if either the community planning department or the planning commission have any remarks on this, or, I mean, I feel like they might. I guess I would ask if you have any comments on this.
I basically gave my comments at the work session. You do have the timelines in front of you. I do have it up, I can put it up on the screen for timelines.
Sure. So I remember the work session well, so I'm asking not just for my benefit, but for the people who weren't able to attend the work session. And then also, I mean, I don't think, we didn't have the Chair of the Planning Commission at our work session. So, I mean, I guess I would be, if you have comments, I'd love to hear them, otherwise I've got some of my own, so.
Well, I'll just briefly say that the conditional use process right now is 45-plus days, and most of the public generally considers that a long process. And Mr. Roberts is right that the rezone process is longer than that because of the hearings and the meetings that have to be done at the assembly level for the final decision. So, you can't, once you know something's coming in, you can't beat the clock with the rezone. But the concern that community planning has is the additional time that's added to every single conditional use, whether or not the neighborhood decides to file an intent to initiate a rezone. Because the green here is the one we complete in this timeline just to do the mailing to the community. And then we have to leave it open for 30 days in case somebody wants to file that intent to rezone. So that's adding automatically 37 days to any conditional use, whether or not anyone ever files any intent. So, there is some impact, even if the neighbors, and if it's rarely used, there's still impact to every conditional use. So I'll just leave that there, and if there's any other specific questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
I have a question for the planning commission then. So I read the minutes, and it looked like it was 6-3 against. And I don't, could you please just, would you mind giving a brief summary of the planning commission's discussion and how that went?
Thank you. I'd be glad to. I'm Eric Muehlinger, I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. I think the public understands in general that zoning separates incompatible land uses for the health and safety of the community. They understand in general that residential use and heavy industrial use are not compatible uses. And what the public is learning is that the conditional use process is something that's just a useful tool for us, that provides us with some flexibility within a zone. The overview, I prepared an overview of the commissioner's comments, and those include a suggestion that a sunset date would provide time to educate the public on the rezone process. Comment, this ordinance would delay or stifle potential businesses that have done due diligence and invested time and money only to be delayed or forced to start the process over on a different property. Concern that this lets controversy and conflict determine land use rather than being more proactive in implementing through the comprehensive planning process. And the proposed ordinance stymies and reverses the streamlining processes that are already working well. I guess in summary, the commission felt that public education on how to initiate a neighborhood rezone is the answer. Neighborhoods can apply for a rezone at any time. Residents would learn how property rights change with a rezone. For example, a change from a GU to residential would create setbacks and limit property owners' rights and uses. That's the trade-off. You would lose some of the property rights but block inactivity that neighbors find objectionable. The planning commission opposed adoption of this ordinance, and our consensus was more public education on the rezoning process. Thank you.
Did you have anything else you wished to?
Not this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lajewski.
Where did the, I guess this, for two people, where's the 30 days coming from? For both, the two 30-day increments that could happen if a intent to rezone is filed?
Mr. Roberts.
So, after the conditional use process done, you get 30 days, any of the individuals that were notified have 30 days to go in and file a letter of intent to do a rezone. And I said that quickly, maybe not exactly, the person who got the DPOs, I'd have to look back at the ordinance. We have some leeway there. So, 30 days to file a letter. And then from the day that letter's filed, they have 30 days to get a completed rezone application turned in. So the maximum is 60 days, and the minimum, if somebody was to file a letter, the minimum would be 31, otherwise the minimum is 30.
I know, but why did you pick 30? Is that repeating in previous borough code, or is there precedent for that?
No, we just, I think we just picked it for, because it was a reasonable amount of time. DPOs take a while to get out to people, they get their mail, and maybe they want to talk amongst themselves and make a decision on it. And so, we wanted to give people a little bit of time. Those times are flexible.
So for, I guess maybe the borough attorney, how short of a time would be considered unreasonable? Obviously, shorter than what the post office can deliver, but 10 days, or 15 days, or 20 days would be unreasonable?
I mean, there's no legal requirement that we do this, so there isn't really a legal amount of time that you would need to set. But you would have to at least allow someone to receive the notification and have a business day to act on it. So, that would, that would be up to the body.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Looks like Ms. Nelson would like to also...
We generally budget for 10 days for any kind of mailing that we put out to be received because everything goes to Anchorage and back, and people don't always pick up their mail every day. So, that's a standard practice in our offices, 10 days to receive it from the date we mail it.
Right, they can sit in the post office box or whatever for a few days, et cetera. Okay, well, I've got a couple of, I guess, comments. Mr. Tackey, I think you said something along the lines, refresh my memory, you might have forgotten too already. I think you were complaining that if, you were saying, property rights don't work, that basically if you're there first doing something, that doesn't give you the right because you're there first, something along those lines.
Yeah, you can't impede on someone else's property rights just because you happen to have an adjacent one before them.
Yeah, and so, there's a principle in homesteading. I just looked it up 30 minutes ago, and Murray Rothbard, Austrian economist, extated it pretty nicely, but I think we all intuitively know it. And there's, there's a principle that kind of goes actually against that. And the idea, the example he uses is with an airport. If you build a house, your own residential house, before an airport gets put in, you've kind of homesteaded the right to not have noise pollution over your house. So when the airport comes in, they're violating your rights. But if the airport's there first, and you build a house right next to it, you don't, you no longer have the right to claim no noise pollution. So I mean, we could use this principle with smell from marijuana shops, or dogs barking, or whatever, shooting ranges. So that, anyway, that comes to mind when I'm considering this, is just, that would, I guess, be to Mr. Roberts' credit. I think he's trying to protect those, hey, you've gone out here, you've built a house, you're living in it, you've homesteaded a certain lack of pollution, whatever you might consider that to be. And I guess I have a comment in response to Mr. Cooper. And I think we should, could all keep this in mind here, and I'm trying to figure out how to apply this here correctly, but you said something along the lines that property owners ought to be responsible for understanding their zoning. I agree with you too, in a perfect world, but I try to keep in mind, whatever we do here in this Assembly, in terms of things we pass and the public's ability to navigate it, you know, I try to think, what level of comprehension should we tailor it for? So that the bottom 10% of society can understand everything fine, or so that the top 10% only can really understand, navigate it, or what the case is? I'd like to keep it towards the bottom so pretty much everybody can easily understand it. And to everyone else here, you're all like, really smart, so if you make it so that you can understand it fine, remember there might be other people who can't easily understand whatever the new process is. So, anyway, with that said, I've got an amendment. I'd like to change 30 in line 105 and 30 in line 108 to 15, so that we'd shorten up this process.
Okay, so, Mr. Lajewski has proposed changing, and do you have it, what, you want to change it to? I'm sorry, you said 15?
15, for both 30s.
Has proposed to change 30 in line 105 and 108 to 15 days. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Ms. Lajewski, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. I'm sorry. Mr. Roberts, do you wish to speak to this anymore, or do you think you've already?
I guess I'd just say, I agree with the statements that there's concern about extending the length of the process. This would still extend it, but not as much. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. On the amendment, Mr. Roberts, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, like, as I was saying, the timeframe is flexible, and I do think that that probably still gives enough time. They will have to move quick, but the burden is on them, and we'll get our DPOs out, and that will definitely lower this extra time if that's someone's main concern.
Ms. Nelson, any comment on 15 days?
I think 15 days for the rezone application, the second 30, is pretty tight. 15 for the intent seems reasonable.
The other discussion debate on the amendment. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. And this is, certainly won't carry the main motion. Mr. Quest?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
8-1.
It's, the amendment is adopted 8-1, and we're back to the ordinance as amended. And I have next Mr. Quest, and then the Mayor.
Thank you. Well, in general, I would speak against this ordinance, and much of what I would say has been said very well by others here. But I will be a little bit redundant. I don't think that it's an excessive burden to expect that property owners know what zone their property is in. Owning property is, is a significant thing, and, and knowing what the zone is is just something that, that goes along with that. One thing important to keep in mind, I mean, this is really about GU and conditional use processes. And if you have property in GU, you enjoy quite a bit of freedoms, and you can use that property in many different ways. And maybe one thing that isn't obvious about our code, but I think it would be, you know, behoove property owners to know, that general use is, you know, the inverse of basically all our other uses, our other zones, in that, you know, in all our other zones, we list what's allowed. Well, in GU, we just list what's not allowed, basically. And if it's not prohibited, then you can do it. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of freedom there. And if, you know, you don't think that that much freedom is something that your neighbors should have, well, then you should get together with your neighbors and start a rezone. And I do realize that, I mean, that we have a problem, and I really think that the proposed ordinance is not the solution to this problem. And that's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, planning and zoning can be a little bit complicated, but it's really not rocket science, no offense, Christine. And we offer free information at our planning department if people have questions. And the whole basis of planning and zoning, planning is forward thinking, it's planning. And it's a tool, and the most frequently utilized tool, to promote economic development and organization and organized growth of a community. We don't do a real good job of it, not our department per se, but our community isn't doing this at the level they really should, which is what's causing the problem that we're experiencing here. So the tool is planning, and it's forward thinking. This ordinance is retroactive after the fact. It totally undermines planning. Because you can't plan. You don't know till after the fact. It's a huge discouragement, as was pointed out, to economic development and business investment in a community when you've got no guarantee you're going to be able to do anything after you put your money down necessarily. You know, and a lot of these developments are long-term pieces of property, or somebody decides to open a daycare on their lot that they've been living on for 40 years, and, you know, now they don't know if they can do it, and after the fact, they can lose a property right that they had. That's why we've done grandfather rights to the extent that we have. They're very strong in our community, and I believe in them, on the first come, first served in a neighborhood or whatnot. And if you want a residential neighborhood, we have them. Zone it that way, and then your guarantee is there. We'd be glad to explain the rules to anybody, free of charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Major.
I actually think that Mr. Lajewski made some very provocative comments and some, and some very provocative questions. I actually agree with him that, I mean, I, so I've been on the planning commission, I'm now on the Assembly, and I struggle with reading some of the rezoning, or some of the, the, chapter 18, whatever. I still struggle reading it. In fact, I went back and looked at it because of this ordinance, and even I got lost going through the system. And so this is a fairly, you know, the folks sitting here are fairly highly educated, and so for us to even not be able to understand, I look at my parents, I think about my parents. My parents, I don't think, would be able to tell you what there's, what their property is zoned, nor would, and they would probably be just as shocked if something similar happened. I grew up in a suburb of Minneapolis, and I saw what, what happened to farms as cities expanded out, and people bought properties next to farms because they thought it was quaint and cute until the smell, right? And then they forced people, so I agree so much with some of what Mr. Lajewski said in the fact that we need to, we need to really open our ears and think about those things, hear those things, and think about those things, because they're true and they're legitimate for a lot of people. Do I think that this ordinance as is solves those problems necessarily? No, I don't, but I do think is indicative of a much bigger problem, and I don't think we should just kind of stand on our own laurels and say, "They should have known." I, when I bought my house here in Fairbanks, I probably didn't, didn't look, didn't think of it, right? And like I said, having been on the planning commission and on the Assembly, I still don't know the rules, or I still need help interpreting what those rules are. So, I thank Mr. Lajewski for his, his comments and his questions, because I think they expand on how we ought to think critically about some things.
Okay, I'm at the end of my list. Any last, yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, this, we may be just talking about wording here. I believe the majority of the owners of property in this community know what, what the zone of their property is, but that doesn't mean they have a clue as to what that means, or how that affects their use or other people's use of their, of the adjoining property. So I, you know, I, I really encourage the administration to send out those postcards and start educating, and you start with the general use, owners, which is only 80, 85% of the property, but, you know, I urge that, because I think that's a more appropriate way of dealing with what we have here, is a problem. This ordinance, you know, I think creates more problems than it solves, and I can't support it.
Mr. Roberts.
I'll wind up.
Okay.
See if someone else has...
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Gray?
Can that info, or is that info on property tax bills, or could it be somehow?
The zone is...
I mean, the zone is, but could any other info be added?
We could...
I know it would make it like several pages long.
Yeah, we fight to keep our little box every year, so, yes, I think the post...
Pointing them to the code maybe, or something?
Yeah, the postcards are a good idea. There are other tools that we're working on right now that will address some of these concerns. That includes looking at the conditional use criteria and including criteria that talk about the character of the neighborhood and does it fit, as well as supplemental regulations for some of these most incompatible and controversial uses. So we are working on those. It just takes time and, but we understand the issue, we've heard it from the public, and we are empathetic to their concerns. We just want to... concerns. We just want to approach it from a little different perspective.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got Mr. Roberts, Mr. Quist, and Mr. Tackey.
So I was going to point out that if you go to the site, you know, the way I usually, if I want to know about a property, I go actually to the tax assessing site, which is the easiest one. You punch in the address or the name, and it brings the property up, and on there, they don't put the zoning. You know, they haven't, their databases don't link up right, and the excuse they give me in the past when I've asked about it, and so the zoning is put on there. So you actually have to go to like a special zoning map or map with a zoning layer, and those aren't the easiest to read. I mean, I've used them, but they're not the easiest to read to, to be exactly sure what your zone is. Sometimes yes, sometimes no. So it's not that simple. And of course, the person buying a property isn't the one necessarily looking at a tax assessing bill. He's probably looking online, or maybe the realtor will tell him. So it's, it's just not as simple as people think.
Thank you. Mr. Quist, and then Mr. Tackey.
Thank you. Well, the comment that I was, am going to make is very much so the opposite of what Mr. Roberts just said. I was going to compliment and encourage, because like the, the GIS at the borough now is just brilliant and beautiful and easy to use, and there's like so much information. And I don't remember exactly like when it got the upgrade, but I mean, the new, the new system's really nice and very easy to use, and if you want to find out your zone, or a bunch of other things, I mean, you can layer layers, and it's, it's really cool. I would say, if you want to find out what your zone is, or lots of other information about your property or any property in the borough, the GIS on the borough website is really, really remarkable. So, and then just on the ordinance, and then the last thing I'll say here, and I mean, it was testified to, I, I think that this ordinance, if adopted, would have a chilling effect on commercial investment of real estate in the borough, and I would urge its defeat. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tackey, and then Mr. Mayor.
Just a clarifying point to the whole homesteader principle, and Mr. Lajewski's comment was that, you know, it's going to be zoned and planned for accordingly. Like, there's not airports going into residential neighborhoods if it's zoned as a residential neighborhood. People that want to go and buy something next to an airport understand that that's what they're going to be getting into as they purchase property. But I would also like to convey that, yes, this is an area of education for our community, letting people know that they can rezone their GU1 residentially characterized neighborhoods. And I'm really, you know, excited to see what that postcard yields for conditional use permits, and what you might be educating them of what they can do.
Be careful what you ask for, huh? Mr. Mayor?
Well, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Lajewski in what he said, and so I'm just, I'm not sure why that is speaking in favor of this. I think it speaks against this. When, you know, homesteader or grandfather rights, essentially the same sort of thing. If you've got a, a use on a piece of property or a right on a piece of property, you should be able to exercise that right. And you're, if you're, start exercising that right, you're my neighbor, and I decide I want to start growing marijuana on my property, and I'm doing legally permissible things, and you decide you don't like it, so you get a rezone, is what we're talking about here, after the fact, retroactive. You're taking away my property rights to do what I was legally permissible to do with my property after the fact. I mean, we were both there, so kind of regardless, irrelevant who bought first. I'm doing what's legal on my property, and it might be, I might have bought before or after you. That's irrelevant to this ordinance. It's just the activity and your ability to, after the fact, take away my property rights. That's why we have grandfather rights. That's what homesteader rights are about, and that's why I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Okay, my list is, okay. Clerk, I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Lajewski?
I need a minute.
To the listening public, this is a conundrum where Mr. Lajewski is pondering, so it's quiet.
Yes.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Tackey?
No.
Mr. Quist?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mr. Lawrence? Ms. Dodge?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Two seven.
It fails two seven. Do you all want a break, or do you want to roll on? Okay, we're, we're voting to roll. Well, a couple of people are voting with their feet not to, to roll, to a break. Okay, we're going to go to ordinance number 2018-13, and that's an ordinance amending various portions of Chapter 2.32, Fairbanks North Star Borough Code Personnel System. It is, the sponsor is Mayor Castle, and it's on page 148 of our document. Ms. Mayor Castle, do you have a staff report?
We certainly do. We'll go to our HR Director, Ms. Stuvik.
Thank you. Good evening. We bring forward this housekeeping ordinance to incorporate changes that were negotiated in the collective bargaining agreements into the personnel code. We took the opportunity to also make some other updates for clarification, edits, and to reflect our current practice. These changes are intended to simplify and standardize personnel administration between the represented and the non-represented employee classifications. At the work session last week, I discussed each specific change proposed in this ordinance, so I don't intend to do that this evening, but would be happy to answer any questions you have. And that concludes our brief staff report.
Okay. Well, let's open public hearing. So I'm going to open public hearing on ordinance 2018-13, which is an ordinance amending various portions of Chapter 2.32, Fairbanks North Star Borough Code Personnel System. I don't have anyone signed up. I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'm going to close public hearing. Look for a motion.
Move to adopt.
Second.
So it's been moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Tackey, it looks like, is getting the nod. Okay, so, assembly debate, discussion. Seeing none, clerk, it looks like we're ready to vote. And to the listening public, as Ms. Stuvik said, she went through this with us last week, so we have thought about it, asked questions, and are voting on it from that perspective. Thank you. Clerk?
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
He stepped away.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
He stepped away.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Seven zero.
It's adopted seven zero. That takes us to ordinance number 2017-20-2C, which is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017-18 budget by appropriating $106,177 of funds received from the U.S. Army Garrison Fort Wainwright, USAG Fort Wainwright, to the Capital Projects Fund for the interconnection of 911 systems and authorizing the execution of a contract change order with microdata GIS in excess of $100,000. Sponsor is Mayor Castle, but first, we're going to turn to Ms. Major.
Yes, I do want to declare a conflict of interest. Essentially, in the, the second in charge of U.S. Army Garrison Fort Wainwright, I have been involved as the senior leader for Fort Wainwright in some of the discussions, and I did actually sign the memorandum, the support agreement between Fort Wainwright and the city of Fairbanks for the computer aided dispatch.
Thank you. I think that sounds like a good explanation of conflict of interest, or a good description of it. Okey doke. So now, Mayor Castle, do you have a staff report?
We do. Go to our Emergency Operations Director, Mr. Gibbs.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This ordinance was covered in some detail during the work session, so I'll just hit this, the high points. This ordinance accepts and appropriates funding that the borough has already received from the Army that would allow us to exchange location information for 911 calls that are received from residential and commercial properties, as well as wireless phones, so those calls that originate on Fort Wainwright. In addition to accepting and appropriating the funding, the passage of this ordinance would allow us to execute a contract change order in excess of $100,000 to purchase the necessary hardware, software, that would allow the exchange of that location information when the call is transferred. As part of the project, the borough has agreed to extend its wide area network, and we're currently in process working with our wide area network provider to do the engineering to do that. So we're not into spinning any issues with, with doing that. One thing I did not mention during the work session is that Fort Wainwright is a part of our 911 service area, and residential commercial property owner, or owners that have telephone service on Wainwright do contribute to our surcharge, as well as soldiers that might have wireless phones. They're all contributing to the borough's 911 program. As Ms. Major alluded to, the MOA was signed with Fort Wainwright authorizing this back in 2016. With that, that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to open public hearing on ordinance 2017-20-2C, which is an ordinance appropriating fiscal year 2017-18 budget by appropriating $106,177 of funds received from the U.S. Army Garrison Fort Wainwright to Capital Projects for interconnection of 911 systems and authorizing the execution of a contract change order. I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close public hearing.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Wow. It was moved by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Tackey. Discussion, debate, questions? Yes, Mr. Tackey?
Is there a timeline of when you would have this all actually set up and switched over?
We can, once we get the, the contract change order executed, we can work with our vendor to have the equipment installed. Really, the issue's going to be on the Fort Wainwright side, because there's a lot of moving pieces. Not only are they doing a 911 upgrade, they're also doing a computer dispatch upgrade. They're doing significant construction. They have some communications issues. So, yes, we can be up and running in probably 60 days, but on the Fort Wainwright side, I think there's some issues that may push the project back a little bit, so.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion, debate? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Eight zero.
Before you leave, would an immediate reconsideration be of use?
It would be, thank you.
Thank you.
For immediate reconsideration.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Cooper, seconded by this row. But we'll, we'll give it to Mr. Gray. Clerk, please call the roll on immediate reconsideration.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Tackey?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Quist?
No.
Mr. Lajewski?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Ms. Dodge?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none, immediate reconsideration?
Eight zero.
Failed. Eight zero. Thank you. And for the listening public, that just asked the body, do we want to reconsider it? And once we say no, then it can be executed or acted upon tomorrow. So that takes us to ordinance 2017-20-2D, which is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017-18 budget by appropriating $260,251 in federal grant funds and $25,834 in state matching funds to the Transit Enterprise Projects Fund to acquire four new paratransit vans. Sponsor is Mayor Castle. It's on page 165. Mayor Castle, do you have a staff report?
We do. Go to our Transportation Director, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. So this ordinance appropriates grant funds to replace four of our existing van-tran vehicles. The funds are CMAC funds that were remaining from an old project, from the Vanpool Rideshare project, and it was closed out several years ago. The remaining funds were repurposed through the CMAC Project Evaluation Board, FMATS, and the Federal Transit Administration. The state of Alaska will provide the necessary match funds for the purchase of these vehicles. And all four of these four van-tran vehicles have reached the end of their life, according to the FTA replacement schedule for both age and mileage. And in addition, all four of these vehicles have accelerated corrosion on the body panels and electrical systems due to the de-icing agents that are now being used on our roads. And when these new vehicles are placed in service, the existing vehicles will be salvaged and removed from the borough fleet. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you.
So I'm going to open public hearing on ordinance 2017-20-2D, which is an ordinance appropriating funds to purchase Transit Enterprise, uh, four new, four new paratransit vans. I have no one signed up. Sorry. And I see no one coming forward, so I'm going to close public hearing on ordinance.
Second.
2017-20-2D. Moved by Mr. Cooper, seconded, seconded by Mr. Gray. Discussion, debate on ordinance 2017-20-2D. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Nine zero.
It's adopted nine zero. And that takes us to citizens' comments. This one is citizens' comments A, I believe. This is for items that are not scheduled for public hearing. It's a continuation from our earlier citizens' comments A. So I'm going to open public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on items that are on the agenda but not up for public comment? Come forward if you do.
I'm not sure.
Okay, well, we'll figure it out. Nope, that's next, coming up. Thank you, though. Okey dokey. Seeing no one else coming forward, I'm going to close public comments. And, well, we have a resolution that we need to address. So that takes us to resolution number 2018-20, a resolution establishing the rate of levy of 2018 real property taxes for area-wide, non-area-wide, solid waste collection district, and service area jurisdictions. It is on page 171, and there's a proposed substitute in our yellow folders. There's also additional information in our yellow folder. So Mayor Castle, why don't you give us a staff report and help us understand what's in our yellow folders?
We can do that. We'll go to our Treasury Budget Manager, Peggy McDonald.
So on the resolution, you can see that we are going to the cap for area-wide. We're $4 under the cap for non-area-wide, and $4 under the cap for solid waste collection. What I did provide for you in your folders for additional information is the taxable assessed valueations for year 17, and then what the 18 assessed, net taxable assessed value, certified in taxable assessed value are, so that you can see our increase in the mandatory exemptions and the residential exemptions, and then where we sit for our net taxable assessed value. I'm here for any questions on that. And so our area-wide mill rate for 18 will be 12.850. Non-area-wide would be the 5.0.570, and then solid waste collection is 1.534, and then attached is all the service areas' mill rates.
Okay. Thank you. So that takes us to, I'm looking for a motion.
To adopt. Second.
So moved by Mr. Cooper, seconded by Mr. Tackey.
Substitute. Second.
So Mr. Cooper has moved the substitute, and Mr. Tackey has seconded that. So the substitute is before us. Discussion, debate, questions? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Question for Ms. McDonald. And you may, probably don't know this at this point, but, you know, this community passed an initiative a year ago to increase the residential exemption from, what, 20,000 to 50,000?
Yes.
What, and if, you know, what impact, I mean, what would the mill rate be for this coming fiscal year had that not happened?
I could say it would be lower, because if you look at the new residential exemption on the 18. on the '18, we went from $289 million to $741 million in residential exemption.
Okay, now, where, where is that?
It's on, on this upper box.
All right.
Second, the less the residential exemption fire, and fire. So, you can see that our net taxable assessed value has gone down because we have a very large increase in our residential exemption.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, debate? Seeing none, clerk, it looks like we're ready to vote.
On the substitute attached.
On the substitute. And it will carry the main, thank you. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Logeski?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none.
Eight-one.
It's adopted eight-one.
Move for immediate reconsideration.
Second.
So, it's a move by Mr. Cooper and seconded by Mr. Gray to immediately reconsider this budget. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Logeski?
No.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I mean, no.
Mr. Tackey?
No.
Mr. Quist?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Ms. Dodge?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote?
Zero-nine.
The reconsideration fails zero-nine. That takes us back to bid award IFB Number 18039, which is the North Pole Middle School Mechanical Systems Replacement and Upgrade, approval of a base bid as submitted by Richard Stanton Construction, Inc., in the amount of $4,130,000. It's on page 86 of our packet. Mayor Castle, do you have a staff report?
We do. We go to our General Services Director, Corey Beal, for that report.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. This project consists of new mechanical and electrical systems, including boilers, hydraulic piping, pumps, HRVs, DDC controls, and electrical service at North Pole Middle School. Funding for this project was made available by Ordinance Number 2013-60, which is a local bond and a 70% state reimbursement. The competitive process was conducted in compliance with Title 16 requirements, with the bid from Richard Stanton Construction being the lowest responsive, responsible bid. We recommend approval of the award of the base bid in the amount of $4,130,000 to Richard Stanton Construction. That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Look for a motion.
Move to award IFB Number 18039, North Pole Mechanical Systems Replacement and Upgrades' Base Bid to Richard Stanton Construction, Inc., in the amount of $4,130,000.
Second.
Supposed to be moved by Mr. Cooper, seconded by Mr. Gray. Discussion, debate, questions? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, so, is the boiler going to be a gas-oil combo? How's that going to work?
Yes, there'll be combination burners. There'll be three new boilers, and there'll be combination gas-oil.
Okay. And so, it looked, at first, it talked about a tank being removed, but then I see that was in alternate A. So, is the existing tank going to stay there, then?
The existing tank will stay there in both cases to supply oil to the boilers. What the tank issue is with the alternate is that the new generator will have its own tank, and currently, the generator is fed from the tank that's there, which makes it a regulated tank by DEC because it's not just heating oil. And when we're, if we, if we build the alternate, that removes the, the non-heating oil use for the oil, so the tank becomes non-regulated by DEC. And there's a process going through to deregulate a tank, because heating oil tanks are not regulated.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion, debate? Seeing none, clerk, it looks like we're ready to vote.
Mr. Logeski?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence? Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote?
Seeing none. Nine-zero.
It's awarded nine-zero. And that takes us to messages from the Borough Mayor. Mr. Mayor, have you messages?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
And that, so, comment, public comment is still coming. We just are going through, we go through the messages, although we, yeah.
Okay. If, did you want to do the public comment?
We can, if, if the body is good with reordering, we can do that.
Yeah, I.
No objection.
No objection, we're going to do that. So, that's going to take us to citizens' comments on items other those, than, other than those appearing on the agenda. So, this is the section to speak on anything not scheduled on the agenda. So, those of you that have patiently waited, please come forward, take a seat. We'll ask you to give us your name, spell your last name, tell us your neighborhood, and you'll have three minutes. And if you wish to, you may. We can fill both seats.
Hello. My name is Timothy Whistler, W-H-I-S-L-E-R. I live in the McGoffin Heights subdivision, and I would like to talk about the swim team fees. But first, I'd like to thank you all for your service. I know this isn't exciting or flashy, but this is really important, and this is what functional democracy looks like. So, thank you very much. I'm a former competitive swimmer, getting back into it myself now. I have a daughter on the Midnight Sun Swim Team. And I'm not sure if the Assembly is very familiar with the fees and things like that that, that go into the swim team, so I thought I would let you know from a parent standpoint what we pay. So, I pay about $100 a month for fees, about $15 to $30 for each swim meet we attend. We have volunteer required hours we put in every year, and we have to fundraise at least $300 a year. From talking to our treasurer, and I'm not on the board, and I'm not the treasurer, but from speaking with our treasurer, our, our fundraising amount is what is used to pay the pool fees. The dues pay the coaches, because it requires professional coaching for swim teams. And so, if, and I, and I personally find it difficult to do fundraising, working full-time, this, you know, my daughter's a student full-time with other curricular, extracurricular activities and swim practice, it's hard to go out and ask for money. And so, if we had to quadruple the amount, if that's what the team had to do, because they'll, they'll have to do something, I think it's pretty lean, we would have to raise maybe $1,200 a year, or pay more in dues, or find some other way to make it up. And I think that would be very difficult for us to do, and I'm particularly concerned that that would be difficult for families of lower income. I think, you know, this is such an important activity, both socially and physically and for health reasons, that we would be pricing a lot of people out of this. And so, that's, I wanted to let you know that that's kind of the structure in the, in the fee system. And then I did want to reiterate, because I saw some, I think, some surprise, that when the swim team is swimming, other people are using the pool, too. And I, I lap swim in the mornings, and when they have morning practices, they don't use the whole pool usually. And I, the only time I've ever seen the swim team use the whole pool is at swim meets. So, anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see if there are questions for you. I, I have one. Oh, no, Mr. Quist answered one first. Thank you.
So, thank you for your testimony. About how many families are part of the Midnight Sun Swim Team?
Um, boy, we, I think we have around 100 swimmers, I'm guessing, and some of those have more than one child, so it's somewhere less than that, but probably more than half of that.
Okay.
I would guess.
Okay, so, if I could continue. So, we heard earlier from a board member of Midnight Sun Swim Team that the expected annual impact was about, going to be about $30,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so, if you, you know, if, if that's $40 an hour, which is like the, you know, the fees for FY19 as they've been adopted, that's about like 60 hours a month. So, I mean, like, right now, it's about like $10, $12 an hour, it's proposed to be 40. Again, what I'm trying to get at is you said that you fundraise, or families are expected to fundraise 300 a year, you know, you think that that might have to go to 1,200.
That's just my simple math.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, I guess if you're trying to raise $30,000, and you have, I guess, like, 60 families, maybe, would be a fair guess, if there's 100 swimmers.
Sure.
So, that's $500.
Yeah.
I mean, so, does that sound about right?
It's, it's possible, yeah. And those, those, I don't know that the entire fundraising goes to the pool fees.
And if, just one more, if I could. So, then, so, and this is kind of in the context of renting the whole pool out, because, I mean, we, and I'm going to follow up with the administration at some point, because we had, we talked about this quite a bit in Finance Committee, and the reason that we look surprised is because, I mean, we really thought that when you rented the pool, that you got the whole pool. But let's say that you rent the pool and you get the whole pool. What do you, and you have, like, I, we heard earlier, like, we had a pretty lengthy discussion in the six o'clock hour. We heard that there's like maybe two dozen swimmers at a time. So, I mean, like, what, what do you think is a reasonable price, either per hour or per swimmer, or whatever you want to give him?
Well, frankly, I think that this kind of thing, along with swim lessons, is so important that I think it should be zero, personally, and that the tax base, you know, I'm willing to pay more, more taxes at a reasonable rate to pay for this kind of thing, because I think it's that important. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Whistler? Seeing none, thank you, and thank you for staying with us. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
I, my question was answered, thank you. And we have another empty seat. If someone wishes to speak, please give us your name, your address, and, I'm sorry, your neighborhood, spell your last name for us.
My name's Christina Study, S-T-U-D-Y, and I live in the city of North Pole.
Thank you.
So, I did want to comment on the swim fees. So, NPAC uses the pool for 16 and 1/2 hours a week. At $40 an hour, it equals $660 a week. For a month, that's $2,640 a month. That equals $31,680 a year. I have two kids that swim. It costs me $210 a month for them to swim. If there's a swim meet that month, it could cost me between $50 and $60, depending how many events they swim in that meet. So, you're looking at my bill, conceivably, is up to $300 a month for my children to swim. I can't afford 1,200. That's what you're looking at. You are quadrupling the rates for the swim team to rent the pool, to share the pool. They're not renting the pool, they are sharing the pool. So, when you talk about two dozen swimmers, yeah, you're right, sometimes there is two dozen swimmers. But when you add lessons, that takes two lanes. When you have lap swim, that takes a lane or two. So, you're putting 12 to 20 kids in two lanes. So, there's times where there could be 10 kids in a lane trying to get their practice They don't get a good practice, and to charge $40 an hour for the pool to be rented by a swim team, they're not getting the whole pool. If you pay to do lap swim, it's $4 for kids to swim, and they can swim for the total They have their own space. To charge $40 an hour and not give the whole pool up, you're putting 12 kids in a lane. Yeah, sometimes there's not 12, sometimes they have basketball, or there's other things going on. But conceivably, that's a lot of pressure for those kids, and swimming is so important. It's a life skill. These kids build morale, they have support groups. It's important. They go from the school to the swim. It's a big part of their lives, and I guess I just hope you guys, I guess I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much. Let's see if there are questions for you. We'll start with Ms. Major, then we'll go to Mr. Quist, then we'll get, go to Ms. Lawrence.
I wasn't sure, and I think you said it, but it wasn't clear to me. What swim, what competitive swim group or swim team do your kids swim with?
NPAC.
And so, can you, can you spell that for me?
It's North Pole Aquatic Club.
Okay.
NPAC.
Okay. I hadn't, I hadn't heard that one before. So, it's the North Pole Aquatic Club.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more, or was that your question?
Oh, no, that, yeah, that was my question, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Quist?
Thank you. I have a question for the administration. I mean, could you please help clear up the confusion? I mean, I don't think I'm alone in thinking that when the swim team rents the pool, they get the whole pool, but clearly, that's not the case. Could, would you please speak to that? Or I could phrase it as a more direct question, if you like.
It varies. Depends on the pool, whether it's Westcott or Hammy. It depends on what event is going on. So, it's highly variable. Sometimes, yes, it is the entire pool, sometimes, no, it's not the entire pool. And there's all levels of in-between, as far as usage is concerned. And again, it varies from one pool to the other, also.
So, I mean, I guess I, I'm kind of curious, and we can have this conversation maybe some other time, but why it is that, like, it seems like this whole body walked away from, you know, some pretty in-depth conversation on the subject, thinking that when the swim teams rent, I mean, I think the question was even asked explicitly and answered. So, I mean, I guess my question, then, is under the new fees that we have approved for FY19, is there any planned change in that kind of relationship? I mean, if the pools, now, let's say they're paying $40 an hour, are they getting the whole pool, or is it still going to be the same kind of thing?
Essentially, it's the same program.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Ms. Study, how many lanes does Hammy Pool have?
My kids swim at NPAC, at North Pole.
At Westcott?
At Westcott, yes, sir.
How many lanes does Westcott have?
If they do yards, it's six.
If they do what?
If they do it in yards, across the short part of the pool, it's, they do six lanes.
So, in other words, you can do it longitudinally, or you can do it, yeah.
Okay, if you do it the other direction, how many lanes?
It goes through the deep end. I believe it's only four, if you do it longways, which is meters. Does that make sense?
Yeah. All right. I thought, that seems like a pretty narrow swimming pool, maybe, but, as I haven't been in to see Westcott, but just four lanes is.
If you, if you do it in meters, it's four. So, you would go from the deep end, where the diving boards are, across to the other side. Does that make sense?
Right.
Like, width-wise, as opposed to length-wise.
How, how wide are lanes, no matter what direction, which dimension you're doing, using the pool, how wide are lanes? Did you say a meter? It's got to be more than a meter.
Honestly, I, I don't. That's a good question, but I don't.
Aaron, do you know?
Don't remember exactly. It's more like three meters. Each lane wide.
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Quist.
So what do you think is, oh, I mean, I guess I'll ask the same question as the Mr. Whistler. What do you think's a reasonable rate per hour, per lane, or per head, or however you'd like to do it?
I guess it depends. If we can have the pool to ourselves and have more of our kids in the pool, then I, I think that's a different answer than if we're still sharing the pool. Does that make sense?
So, yeah, if I could follow up then, I mean, under whichever scenario you'd like to, or both, I mean, whatever answer you want to give. There's no wrong answer.
Um, I, I guess, I mean, if we can have the whole pool, then I think thirty dollars an hour isn't unreasonable, if we can have the whole pool. But if we have to share the pool, I don't think we should have to pay that much money to share a pool.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
And for, and staying with us. And does anyone else wish to speak for, this is, that hasn't spoken yet? Thank you, welcome.
Hi. I'm Jimmy Baldwin, B-A-L-D-W-I-N, and I live on Roosevelt Street. So I'm a mom and a grandma, and I've got a nine-year-old, who was here earlier, who's interested in joining the swim team, but gee, I didn't realize how expensive it was. I would, just as a parent, looking at this, think that, you know how the pools have individual pricing, and then there is a family rate? I would think that maybe the, the swim team or the Borough might be able to adopt something for multiple children in a family, to have a reduced rate might really help those families. And I wanted to mention that there's a flip side to the part about the swim teams renting the, the pool. There have been times when we go in for open swims at, like, the Hammy Pool, when we aren't allowed access to the whole pool, but the lanes that are set up aren't being used by anybody, that we're not allowed to cross the line from the shallow and medium over into the lanes to swim, to do exercise, even though we paid our fee, to go in and use the pool. And, you know, I really don't know why, but it seems like it's just the reverse of what the swim team is talking about, paying for the pool and not being able to use the whole thing. So I'd just like to point that out as something that maybe could be addressed also. I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Let's see if there are questions for you. I think Mr. Lawrence might have one eventually.
I'm not going to get into it here. I'm just checking to see, maybe the mayor knows. Don't we have a family rate?
For swim teams.
Swimming pools?
Or passes, there are.
But not swim teams.
Okay. I thought you were, what, you're suggesting that a swim team should have a family rate?
Well, I just thought it might, might be one solution that could be for multiple kids in one family, maybe. But I don't know if that's something that the Borough would do, or something that the swim team would have to do. Don't know.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Baldwin? Seeing none, thank you for sticking around. We appreciate it. And welcome. Please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
My name is Shannon Wiegen, W-I-E-G-A-N-D, and I live in the Farmers Loop area.
Thank you.
So a lot of it's already been said. I'm a, I'm a mom, and my daughter's on the swim team. And I think that the, the quadruple price jump just seemed really outrageous and kind of just hit everybody really hard. And I think one of our board members already said it, but I'm, I think, I think pools are so important. I grew up in Fairbanks, and I remember when we all got bused to the Hammy Pool to get swim lessons. We don't do that anymore, and I think swimming is so important. And learning how to swim is so important. So it just kills me. I mean, we're not even talking about swim lessons for everybody. We're talking about making it so prohibitive that a couple of kids can't be on a swim team. And I just think that's going in the wrong direction.
Thank you. Let's see if there are any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you for coming, for staying with us and for your testimony. It's important.
Thanks. You guys are hardworking than you've been.
So, so we are technically at a place where if there's somebody that's already spoken that wishes to speak again, you can have one minute. If anyone wishes to. Seeing none, I'm in a closed public hearing. Or I'm closing for citizens' comments. Item B. And I want to thank everyone for staying with us and for sharing with us. That takes us now, Mr. Mayor, to you. Do you have messages for us?
All sorts of fun stuff. So today was the first day that you could actually go online and buy fare tickets for the fare coming up in August. New program this year, they're selling tickets through Groupon online, brand new this year, and it started today. So anyone that's interested, particularly because there's significant discounts, if you buy online, like, up to thirty percent off on tickets. So nice new addition for the fare this year. I love it when we get kudo letters, and I got one from someone saying, "I'm doing a small addition to my home in Hamilton Acres to complete the city building permit. I was referred to the Borough to get my zoning permit. At the time, I met most, both Nancy Durham and Manish Singh, who both were very helpful, professional, and personified everything we hoped for when interfacing with a municipal servant. I really admire how they go about discharging their duties. Both were efficient, friendly, knowledgeable, and easy to talk to. We all wonder where our tax dollars go, and if we're getting our money's worth, and when we have to interact with government, agency, or representative. And in this case, my experience with both was exemplary." So kudos to planning for free information, planning, on planning and zoning items. Next week at this time, well, almost exactly this time, is the Midnight Sun baseball game. So I think Mr. Cooper and I might be wanting to be getting out of here around nine-thirty or so, and keep our meeting short so we can go to the Midnight Sun game, watch the Panners play. It's a special one this year, okay? The National Baseball League does a program across the country called Play Ball. And the president was on Alaska Airlines and saw our ad from Explorer Fairbanks for the Midnight Sun game, and said, "We need to be there, National Baseball League." And they're coming up here for a new program. They've never done one quite like this before as part of their Play Ball program, but they're calling it Twenty-four Hours of Baseball. And we're starting at midnight on Wednesday, Thursday morning, and going to have baseball tournaments going on in all the different leagues in our community for twenty-four hours straight. The last game will be the Midnight Sun game, starting at ten o'clock Thursday night. So you might expect to see some Panner t-shirts and hats here at the Assembly on Thursday next week. Those bleachers going to be out there? And we're bringing in extra bleachers. We're expecting quite a crowd for the event. It's going to really be multifaceted, and they're bringing in a wealth of prior Gold Panners who have made it to the major leagues are going to be here as VIP guests. It'll really be quite an evening, to say the least. So I think we need some sort of resolution. The Assembly meeting's done at nine-thirty. I don't know, it's up to you guys. But Matt and I might sneak out around then. And lastly, last week, I was a guest at the Army War College for this year's National Security Seminar, and I found it very worthwhile to be there, both for me gaining a little bit of knowledge, but also, I think, I shined a very bright light on the Arctic and the need, strategic location, assistance with the changing ice conditions in the Arctic, and how that impacts our state and our national security and such. And I think that there were some individuals that were somewhat or mostly up to speed, but there were quite a few that really hadn't even thought about the situation before. So I was really glad that I attended, and I think we have a little more attention on what's going on in the Arctic now, with some of the players that were there. And it was internationally attended. There were military personnel from around the globe. There were eighty different countries represented besides the United States, so, and as well as a number, there were a hundred and twenty dignitaries from around the country also. So it was worthwhile and good exposure, both for Alaska and for my knowledge. And with that, that's it. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. That takes us to reports of Special and Standing Committees. I always start with Major, so we'll start with Mr. Tackey.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Mr. Logeski?
No report.
Mr. Gray?
None.
Mr. Lawrence?
No report.
Okay. Should have started with you after all, Ms. Major.
I have nothing to report.
What about your air quality meeting?
Well, I guess I talked about that the last, the last meeting, but if, I'd be glad to share it again. I, I think that the administration has done a great job with what they've put together for the stakeholders, the air quality stakeholders group. I was especially pleased to see some of the diversity in the room, and the different parts of our community that people represent. I, I think they were in that sort of perfect forming stage as a, as a group. They did, they, everybody was assigned or got to choose which work groups that they want to participate in, so some of the work will be done outside the main group and the work groups. And I think having this group of thirty-six, you know, forty folks helped tackle some of the biggest challenges that we, we have is really the right way to, to go with this. I, I'm really looking forward to seeing what that, that group produces.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, any report from Special and Standing Committee?
Yeah, I think I didn't mention last time, but we had a Land Management Commission meeting because of the Assembly's delegation to us of an ordinance. And we had to get the two meetings in and get it back by June, and so we had a meeting three, four weeks ago now for our second meeting, and resolved the differences that we'd like to see, so I'll be bringing forth a substitute for that. Also, another ordinance came out of that, which will actually hit the Assembly before that. And so we'll see that, probably on the consensus ended tonight.
Super. Thank you. Mr. Quist?
Thank you. Well, so Air Pollution Control Commission doesn't have an agenda or a scheduled meeting, but saying some of the people involved in that commission and, and support staff as well are, you know, participating in the stakeholders group that Ms. Major was just talking about. I don't recall Mr. Prue's mentioned it at the beginning of our meeting, but the Police Working Group is meeting tomorrow. And yesterday, the Sustainability Commission met, and it was a good meeting. The most, the single most interesting thing that came out of that, I mean, there were a couple of decisions, but just to mention one, the Sustainability Commission has decided to narrow their scope instead to, you know, because they could focus on many different issues, but instead to keep it constrained to energy and food security issues. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper?
No reports.
Okay. I also have no reports, other than there's a Fedco Board meeting tomorrow at noon, eleven-thirty, I guess. So that takes us all the way to Assembly Member Comments. Anybody want? Mr. Tackey?
I have no comments.
Comments? Mr. Logeski? Mr. Gray? Mr. Lawrence?
Well, I'm going to be leaving town next Wednesday night for a family reunion back east, and I regret the timing of this, because I certainly would be at that Midnight Sun game on Thursday, if I, if I could be.
Thursday, then. Thank you. Ms. Major? Mr. Roberts? Mr. Quist?
I think it's pretty exciting that we're getting out of here while the sun's still shining.
Such it is. Mr. Cooper?
Well, I will, I will be gone next Thursday, but regrettably, not at the Midnight Sun game, so, but my tickets are in good hands. But the mayor would be shocked to know I've already been hanging around Groudon Park, and it's looking good this year. I think that the Gold Panner Organization has made some more improvements, and they're continuing to do a good job with their efforts there. So Park was looking clean and maintained, and, and actually, for a rainy, it was a really cold night, but there were still a lot of people there. My kids finally said they'd had enough, and I had to leave. And I also wanted to note, along the lines of Ms. Major talking about the air control or air pollution working group, or whatever the official name of it, the working group. I talked to John Davies after he attended the meeting, and he likewise had a very positive feeling after the meeting, both with the diversity of the group and with the willingness of the group to work together. It sounded like it was a fairly, a positive start to that process. So thank you for putting that together.
And I, too, have talked to two or three people about the stakeholder group, and they've all been very positive. Jim Dodson was telling me today that they've had people coming in, looking for resources so that their small committees can be moving forward, and, and they're, they're working very, they're very engaged. The other thing I wanted to remind everybody is there's a Juneteenth celebration at Bernice Aldridge Park Saturday.